Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, November 18, 2014, meeting of the Adana City Council and the Adana Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague? Whoops, excuse me. Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. We have in front of us this evening a form of meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as shown. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Next, the consent agenda has numerous items on it, and I think a few of the members of the council wanted to pull some of the items. Member Bennett, you had a couple that you wanted to pull.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to please remove items four N, O, and P from the agenda.
And, Member Brindle, I think yours was four F?
Four F, please.
Member Swenson, four K. And then I had four O as well, and also four E.
All right. I'll move the rest of the remainder of the consent agenda.
All right. We've got a motion and a second to approve the balance of the consent agenda with the exclusion of four EFK, MN, or, excuse me, NOP. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. All right. I'm up first on four E, which is the, a great piece of work by our city staff, I believe, with the idea that we're going to have essentially a no-fault sewer backup coverage, per occurrence limit of $40,000. I take it that's per household. And there are some things that are great about it. There's a couple of things that still bother me. I don't think there's anything we can do about it, but I raised something I've raised with the council before. I think we've had enough of these sewer backup situations where we realize that people don't have adequate coverage. This is going to go a long way towards getting it, getting us in a position where we can help folks. But still, if we have the extraordinary weather event, like we had in June of this year, where we have a 100-year flood event, 100-year storm event, there's no coverage. So personally, I'm still of the mindset that I would like to see us, through the utility fund or some other mechanism, set up a backup policy to the league policy. And this isn't something we need to discuss right now, but I do think that we should have a true no-fault system here, that regardless of what happens, our residents know that they can count on us, to count on their city, to come up with a certain level of funding for them that would back up their sewer backup coverage. And we can work out the particulars of it so that we can help people with basic public health, safety, welfare issues with regard to cleanup. So that's just a comment. I'll move the matter, but I sure would like to revisit this at some point in time. And I know I've mentioned it in the past, and sometimes my colleagues like the idea of having a conversation. Sometimes they don't. I don't know how folks feel now, but if you'd be open to having that discussion at some point in the future, I'd appreciate it.
I would be more than open, so.
All right. I'll move four E.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to note that, as we've emphasized in the past, we really do encourage people to carry their own insurance at whatever level they need to ensure the way that they have finished their basement, whether it's enough to cover the cost of a washing machine, dryer, furnace, air conditioner, water softener, or whether they have a finished basement and need also to be covering furnishings and fittings, drywall and the like. We do really urge people who know their own circumstances to be adequately insured. In the past, I've been a supporter of coming through with, when there's been, for instance, a break in city pipage, but no city liability, no city negligence. I have been a supporter of covering for health and safety, which we did on Wooddale Avenue. But I do think it is important for the budget health of the community to really focus on that private coverage being what is the best solution for most people.
Yeah, I think that's well said. The experience that we've had in the past, though, tells us that no matter how hard we try to communicate to people that they need to have adequate sewer backup coverage, when the time comes and they have an event like that, they just don't have it. For some reason, they're not, that message isn't resonating with them. So we always have people that, you know, either have a modest amount of coverage or no coverage. And so anyway, we can revisit that at some point in the future. Thank you for considering that. We got a motion and a second on four E. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. We're on to four F, and I think Member Brindle just has a comment regarding this memorandum of understanding regarding the canine retirement program. Member Brindle?
I do.
Who is also a member of the crime fund.
This is a project of the Edina Crime Prevention Fund, and it is something the fund has talked about for a couple of years. And that is to, we fund the, what it takes to maintain the canine, our police officers' canine partners, the dogs, during their service lifetime of about eight years. And once they retire, they become the family pet of the police officer who has been the partner of that police dog. And then that individual and his family or her family take on the expenses of managing that animal for the rest of its life. And we thought, and the crime fund, we thought it would be a good idea to kind of look at what it would take to help out the officers with the cost of medical care, food, whatever it might be, within reason, for the rest of that dog's life. And it can be significant, and these dogs are important to us and our community. So this, we actually have a donor who came forward and said, "I want to do this, and I want to do this for this particular dog and for this particular timeframe." So the crime fund put together a memorandum of understanding reflecting the donation from this generous family. And basically, what this says is that the officer, in caring for the retired canine, canine dog, through its retirement, can submit receipts for food, veterinary expenses, grooming, temporary kenneling, whatever it might be, that is essential for that dog in its life. We know that there are issues that come up with these dogs, and they're very precious to us since they've served us. There is a reimbursement program that's described here. It's very well scripted and very well described, but that is what's in this MOU, and it benefits, really benefits, the officer and the dog in the dog's retirement.
Thank you. You want to move the matter?
I will move this.
Thank you for that explanation. All right. We've got a motion and a second on four F. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. We're on to the traffic safety review report. Member Swenson?
I just want to make a comment about A5, which is a request for school walking safety along 59th Street, starting at Concord. I got a call a few months ago from a young mother who wanted to know if we were going to be able to put sidewalks in if she requested it. And I said, "Well, we just repaved your streets. That's probably not going to happen right away." And then she described the problem, and I said, "Well, put together a request to have it studied by the traffic safety group." And she did. And I'm really pleased with your outcome of no parking on the side where the kids are trying to walk home from school and trying to sign it with hours of the school. And I appreciate that work. And so I will move this. I just wanted to comment with a thank you, and hopefully to the young mother who is now happy that she can get her kids safely back and forth to school. So I move this. Thank you.
Got a motion and a second to accept the review and approve the Traffic Safety Committee report of October 1, 2014. That's item 4K. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Now we are on to four N, which is a proposed Resolution 2014-146, supporting a Metro Transit CMAC application. Member Bennett has this matter.
Yes, thank you. I have some questions for the Economic Development Manager, Bill Newendorf. So do you want to please give just one paragraph description of what this constitutes, and then I'll address my questions. Thank you.
Sure thing. Resolution 2014-144 would express support for a CMAC application, which is transportation lingo for a grant that would fund projects that address congestion, congestion mitigation, and air quality. For the last four or five years, the city has been having conversations with Metro Transit about making improvements to the transit system and the park-and-ride, or actually, the park-and-hide over at Grandview. In recent months, as there's some activity started to be planned for the former public worksite, Metro Transit has volunteered to present an application for grant funding to help pay for a future park-and-ride. In order to submit the application, they need a show of support from the city, that the city is aware of this project, potential project.
Sure. Do we know how many vehicles or motorists currently are, as you put it, parking and hiding, rather than parking and riding, from that area?
We have a fairly good estimate. There's, we just met with Metro Transit a few weeks ago. During a recent sidewalk survey, which is basically someone standing and counting people and where they go and where they come from, there's between 55 and 90 folks per day that park either at Jerry's or the city's ramp, or on the side streets, or back behind the liquor store, Walgreens area, various places in the neighborhood, who park there and then take the bus downtown, the express bus downtown.
Okay. And then have, how have we developed forecasts of parking? What instruments or surveys or modeling have we done to know that the number that is in this application, 200 parking stalls for the general public, 158 parking stalls for a private building, and 200 parking stalls for a park-and-ride commuters? How have those numbers been arrived at?
The numbers that you mentioned are rooted in the 2012 development framework. When the steering committee helped bring that framework for redevelopment together, it showed a potential for a mixed-use project on the former public worksite. The consultants that we engaged at the time, led by Cunningham Group, did some very preliminary sketching of what could fit on the property. And the numbers that you just summarized shows what could preliminarily fit on that site. In regards to forecast, that's something that really lies in the realm of Metro Transit. And in speaking with them the last couple of weeks, they have analyzed the TAZ districts, the transit access zones, I believe, in the region. And their estimate shows that they have about 1,400 commuters that live in the neighborhoods immediately around Grandview and that commute to downtown Minneapolis every day. So they are looking to capture about 10% of those riders, or I'm sorry, 10% of those workers as future riders. But right now, with no place to park, there's not a great option for them. So the number they're looking for is about 150 stalls as a park-and-ride facility that could be used by commuters during the daytime, but would be available to the general public in the evening and weekends. And that's what's reflected in this grant request.
And what about the potential for future use of that rail line for passenger use? Understanding that that would be off in the future, but is the potential design of this facility or the sizing of this facility aimed to be flexible enough to accommodate that, should that need arise in the future?
That's a great question, and that's something we haven't explored yet. We're just starting to kick off the development planning for the former public worksite. So as far as specifics about what the facility might look like, what it's shaped, how it interacts with the adjacent streets and the railroad right-of-way, that will happen in the next several months. We haven't come to any specific conclusion yet. But certainly, during the exploration process for that site, we'll look at future uses for it.
Also, with respect to road reconfiguration, which was a great need that was identified at every single phase of the CAT, how does that potential, given the difficulty right now of getting in and around and out of the area, what thought has been given to that? Especially looking at what looks to be, it's not long enough in terms of timeline for some people, but a short timeline for other purposes. And this reads that the project would be constructed, anticipated to be constructed in 2016 or 2017. So what is intended, if anything, to be done to fix the condition of the movement around the area now, the road configuration?
So this grant application only addresses the park-and-ride. It doesn't address any of the surface streets or connections or intersections. But certainly, as we move forward with the site planning process for the former public worksite, how you access that site is a key input to what you can put on that property. So again, I hate to punt, but we're just kicking off the process for that site in the next couple of weeks. And over the next three to five months, we'll explore more of those topics.
Thank you.
Other questions on this matter? I had a couple for you. So as Member Bennett said, the grant application anticipates that our project will be constructed in 2016 or 2017. This is something that we've talked about in this area for several years. What if the grant comes back in a manner where the size of the facility that Metro Transit would want us to construct in partnership with them either exceeds what we would want to do or isn't sufficient in terms of its sizing, you know, that, based on the sort of the parallel work that we're doing with our development partner on a public-private use over there, if it should come about that this park-and-ride, potential park-and-ride needs to be smaller or larger, or just doesn't work at all, what do we do about the fact that we've gotten a grant, or potentially gotten a grant, and now we decide we can't abide by the terms of the grant?
That's an excellent question, and something that we have to be cautious of. So in a way, we're fast-tracking this application. But you have to start somewhere. So one avenue or one process would be to go through the whole site planning process, determine that a park-and-ride might fit on the site or might be highly desirable there. And then we would wait a year or two to apply for grant funding. Well, by that time, the window of opportunity for the project design has kind of expired. So at this point, we're trying to move forward cautiously. The grant applications are due in December of this year. In the spring, the city will do the site planning process for the property. The award of grant doesn't happen until June of 2015. So somewhere in the next few months, if we decide that this just isn't the right project for us, or if Metro Transit says, you know, rather than 150 stalls, they really need 500 or something, we have ample opportunity to realize that this isn't the right combination and back away from it. But if we don't submit an application and put our name on the queue, we'll never be considered for funding.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that we had some flexibility here. We're, you know, we're not tied to the particular location. Member Bennett mentioned the rail as a possibility, you know, that we have enough flexibility to move as we need to move as a community to satisfy all of the needs that we have over in that particular area. Member Brindle?
Thank you. My question is about location. Would it be specific to the public worksite as far as the grant is concerned? Or could this grant apply to the city ramp that's behind Jerry's, which could itself be utilized as a park-and-ride? I actually don't know what the utilization is of that ramp. I do know that with public works not being there, it may be less full on a regular basis than it was previously. But I don't know. I mean, could that structure be considered for this?
At this point, the application is going to identify the former public worksite as the address for the future park-and-ride. If that were to change, and if we decide that Jerry's ramp makes the most sense, we would, and if we're successful in earning the grant, we'd have to go back and request that change. It is harder to request changes once you've been granted the award.
Right.
But as we've demonstrated with our France Avenue project, it is possible to have a similar or better outcome. There's some paperwork involved. It'd be better if we could nail it the first time, but I believe that there is ample flexibility.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Does someone want to move this matter?
I'll move it. I'll second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2014-146, which supports a Metro Transit CMAC application for funding for a potential park-and-ride on the old public worksite. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Next, we are on to four O, which is a proposed restaurant lease agreement between an entity called SNP Enterprises, which many of the folks here and us up on the dais know as Tinfish. And this would be at Braemar Golf Course, and Director Cotry is here. And Member Bennett, go ahead and lead out.
Sure. And I know, Mayor, that you pulled it as well, so I'll state my reason for doing so. And that is that although I had heard that at least one council member wanted to see this happen, I have not been a part of any discussions regarding it. So I would really appreciate, for my benefit and also the benefit of the public, who probably is not aware of this either, knowing more about it, the details, some of the structure, and certainly the physical space configuration, what will and won't change.
Thank you, Member Bennett. I have a quick four-point presentation, if you don't mind, if I could go through some of the key points of the lease agreement. And then I would be happy to answer any questions. Bill Newendorf was the staff person that helped me put together the lease agreement. He's here as well. And Chef and Athena Priest, the owners of the Tinfish, are here to answer any questions as well. So some terms of the lease agreement. We have written a five-year term with two similar renewal periods. The rent is based on 12% of gross sales of food and beverage. And to give you an idea, annually, we have had a $300,000 revenue stream through our grill, and that would equate to approximately $3,000 a month. And we anticipate sales to be higher due to a higher caliber of food service and potential for year-round sales. And additional terms are a $1,200 a month CAM payment for utilities and shared cost of waste disposal. And we also have reduced or increased rent possible for reimbursement for improvements to shared facilities. And the tenant is responsible for taxes on the premises. And some of the scope of services are, the tenant has the exclusive rights to the kitchen facility. The patrons share the existing seating areas with the general public. The city retains the scheduling of special events. The city has the first right to use the valerie room and outdoor decks for special events. The tenant has non-exclusive rights to cater special events at Braemar and non-exclusive use of catering kitchen, although they certainly will be a vendor that has the ability to cater at our facility. The tenant is anticipated to have the opportunity to provide alcoholic beverage service. And in the future, successful liquor operations are anticipated to expand to an exclusive opportunity to provide alcohol beverages, alcoholic beverages onsite. And there are opportunities for future expansion. And we would rewrite the lease with addendums in 2015 and 2016 to provide on-course food and beverage for carts on the golf course, to operate food and beverage machines located throughout the golf course, and operate food and beverage services out of the remodeled executive clubhouse. And some of the terms of construction are that the city turns over a raw space on January 1 of 2015. The tenant will rebuild the kitchen, and the city will update some of the public spaces in the clubhouse. The opening date is targeted for April 1 of 2015, and we hope that'll coincide with the golf course opening. The city will pay for the demolition and improvements to the building shell. The tenant pays for interior build-out of kitchen with partial reimbursement by the city for permanent improvements to the clubhouse. And the city will also pay for updates to the public areas of the clubhouse with partial reimbursement by the tenant. And we chose the Tinfish for a variety of reasons. We had a desire for a high-quality, high-profile vendor. The Tinfish has a very long history of successful operations. We were looking for a community-oriented restaurant operator with a shared vision for improving the restaurant experience, customer service, and the overall guest experience at Braemar. We wanted a restaurant that had a proven track record in a public recreational facility, brand recognition, and a willingness to enter into an uncertain marketplace. And we found all of those things with the Tinfish. So we're very proud to prepare this lease agreement and have it for your approval this evening. And we stand to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Member Bennett.
Thank you. Will Tinfish continue to operate at Lake Calhoun as well?
They do not have a lease. Their lease expired in October of this year at Lake Calhoun.
So for them, it will constitute a move of their business, then?
Yes, that is correct.
And I did see that one of the clauses in the lease allows them to park food trucks at Braemar.
Yes, that is correct. We actually hope that when their food truck is finished, we might have the opportunity to provide food service out of the food truck between nines, kind of as a different type of an amenity from a traditional golf course.
That leads to one of my next questions, and that is, if alcohol service is contemplated on the grounds of the course, how is that regulated?
Well, no. In the clubhouse, it's regulated. But when, for instance, we're talking about the art fair, there has to be a fence set up, and it can only be within the fenced area. So you can...
We do currently serve alcoholic beverages on the golf course from our beverage carts.
Okay. So golfers can have beverages?
Yes, they can.
Differently than our patrons can have beverages. Okay. Also, ask some questions about the scheduling. Noting that there's been a spelling out of the city's first right for special events, how is that scheduling contemplated to be accomplished?
The scheduling, Member Bennett, of the facilities at Braemar will occur just as they have in the past. A city staff person will schedule all the special events. And the Tinfish would have the opportunity, if a patron wanted to utilize their services, to cater an event. But we'll do all of the scheduling of special events at the clubhouse and also golf tournaments and events, just like we have in the past.
Sure. But hypothetically, say someone wants to schedule a wedding reception at a certain date, and the city wishes to hold a meeting, which we try to schedule out on dates, but some, for instance, there are four meetings being held this week that just went on the calendar a week ago. The wedding reception is booked. So is it first come, first served, even though the city technically has a right of first refusal? It's whichever party, whether the private event gets scheduled before the city schedules it?
Member Bennett, that is pretty much the case, actually. Yes. We will book wedding events potentially two years in advance. And we do our best to try to hold any dates that we might believe that there is going to be some sort of a city function. We reserve those dates years in advance. But if there is a wedding scheduled, at this point, it would preclude a city function at Braemar.
So again... I'll just pop in here and mention that that has happened, where there's been a wedding on July 3, for example, which caused the need to move the veterans' dinner to another location. So the private event does take precedence.
Sure. I'm also familiar with agreements that have been struck between governmental entities, or actually, it was a tentative agreement between the school district and the city, where there was a window that a calendar was formed, and it was locked down six months plus 45 days in advance. And I don't see that kind of dating here, but just wonder what you contemplated for operation of that. And I'm understanding. I think your answer's clear. I'm just saying that's where my question came from.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Manager Neal, did you have a comment?
No, I was just going to reference that as well.
Okay. And then last, let's see, a couple of other questions. Use of Wi-Fi, I didn't see that spelled out. I know that there is a utility payment that's going to cover share of separately metered, well, separately metered utilities will be paid directly. Non-separately metered utilities will be paid for out of this fixed rate that will be adjusted with readjustment of the lease. But I had a question, because telecommunications was called out separately... But I had a question, because telecommunications was called out separately, and I know that the city provides Wi-Fi to city facilities, I think including Braemar. Will there be some kind of charge? How will that be billed for?
I'm going to pass that question off to Bill Newendorf.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Yes, for the Wi-Fi, there is public Wi-Fi at Braemar. But if the vendor chooses to, to have their own service for security of credit card transactions and that type of thing, that would be at their sole expense. But certainly, if a patron wants to sit down and have a sandwich and sit down on their cellphone, they'd be able to access the public Wi-Fi that's there.
Okay. So that would not be included in the co, in the, is it called the COAM or the, the shared utilities? That would not be used by the tenant and its customers, would not be a part of that charge? Or would it?
The customers would be able to use the public Wi-Fi.
Right.
As they do now.
As they do today.
Right.
But for the business to use it and rely on it, I don't believe they would find that to be secure for their credit card transactions. So if they have their own internet provider, or their own telephone service, or their own satellite TV, or their own music that's broadcast, streamed over the speakers, that's all 100% at their expense.
Sure. And I guess a little bit of my confusion, I know that we've moved toward more transparency in city budgeting, and that there are some nonprofits, such as the Historical Society, operating in a city facility, paying separately for its telecommunications, and I believe its, its computer use as well. And in this instance, we would have people currently, for instance, using water. But it's my understanding that under the terms of this lease, that's intended to be covered by that payment for non-separately metered utilities. And so there seems, the Wi-Fi seems to be falling into an area where it could be interpreted to be a utility, like the other un-metered utilities. But it sounds like that has not been the interpretation that's been used in drafting the lease.
That's, that's correct. Both the city staff, as well as the tenants, felt that the internet, especially for security in transactions, should be separate.
Again, I was talking about the non-secure internet. I was talking about the shared utility part. I, I understand where, I'm just saying that there would have been a different way to do that. It sounds like the, the contemplation of the utilities is not as, it's missing something that I would have included on that list, basis, the other things that were included, and basis how we have, as a city, moved to billing other entities.
Councilmember Bennett, is the concern that, that they may make business use of the otherwise free internet, that's free Wi-Fi? Is that a concern that you have?
If it's an amenity that you're offering your customers, that's a form of business use. And even if they have a secure line that they use to operate a business, they're still using a pub, that utility the same way that customers are using other utilities within the building that are not separately metered, and that they're paying a share for. So I'm just, I'm just looking carefully at the lease.
Sure. Because we're providing the free Wi-Fi to their customers, because they're also our customers, right?
Not necessarily.
Well, they're in, they're on public, they're on the public...
Right. But they may not be coming to golf. They may be coming simply to dine. And I think that's part of the hope.
Okay. That's true. We, we offer that same service in almost, in most, well, not most, but many of our other city facilities as well, though. The, the Wi-Fi access.
I see.
I would like to add to the conversation that this, this could be compared to the lease arrangements we have at Braemar Arena with the two businesses that operate there. For, for business purposes, they would never rely on our Wi-Fi. It's not secure. It's bad business practice. They, they wouldn't do that. At Braemar Arena, they each contract with Comcast or another provider for internet service. Their customers can benefit from our public Wi-Fi because, because they're shared.
But how, last question. How does that differ from the other un-metered utilities?
I'm not sure how it deals with, how it, I'm not sure how it differs...
Which are included in that charge. So it just seems, it still seems an inconsistency. I appreciate the responses. I think they're thoughtful. But it still seems to be, to be an inconsistency. And then my last question is, I noted several mentions of encouraging sustainability, including organics recycling. Is, does Braemar Golf Course currently employ organics recycling? Is it employed in most city facilities that are having cooperations? The pavilion at Centennial Lakes, the arena? And if, how is that going to be encouraged? I, I see the words as much as realistically possible, but I, I would like to know if there's more encouragement or guidance behind that.
Yes, Member Bennett, there will be organics recycling for the Tinfish at Braemar Golf Course. And we couldn't put any stronger language in there, because there are just some items that aren't recyclable. The Tinfish is committed to have every item that is potentially organically recycled to do that. And I know that they mentioned a couple of items that they purchased that are not, and of course, they're not coming to me right now. We currently are not doing organics recycling at Centennial Lakes, as you mentioned. We just don't do enough food service there to provide that as a city. At Edinburgh Park, however, where we do have a concession operation, we are providing organic recycling.
Okay. And I'm familiar with the signage that they use at Lake Calhoun. It's informative, and it looks to be effective. So that would be, that kind of education for residents and patrons would be helpful.
We absolutely will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, could you show, there were some maps that are going to show what's defined as common area and open area. Do you have those to show on overhead? They are part of the packet.
This is a floor, floor plan of the existing clubhouse. North is up, so the main entrance to the clubhouse facility is on the top of the, of this illustration. And the area shown in green is the kitchen area that would be dedicated to exclusive use to, of the tenant. This takes the existing kitchen, plus a little bit of the seating area, plus a hallway, and transforms that and puts that in the responsibility of the tenant. And then the areas that are shared, I actually have two, two illustrations. So north is still up. So the area that was in green was right here. That's the kitchen and the Tinfish. The dedicated and the primary seating area for patrons, whether you're a patron of the Tinfish, or a golfer, or just want to hang out in a, in a public space, that main area is the existing clubroom dining area. We are anticipating to construct a new patio with some outdoor seating by the front entrance. So as you drive up or walk up to the clubhouse, the first thing you see, rather than a bunch of overgrown shrubs, will be an attractive patio seating area. And then another common area that is just not for dining, but there's a hallway that leads to the common restrooms. That, of course, would be available to the tenant use. And then the last illustration in the packet are the, are the special event spaces. So again, the main entrance is up on this side. But the Valerie Room, the catering kitchen, and then the southern deck and the western deck would be potential special event places. There might be some days where the special event is a Mother's Day brunch. There might be a special event where it's an anniversary party, wedding, et cetera. And those are the areas where the city retains the first right to use that. If the city is not using it, then patrons of the Tinfish would be welcome to use that area. Specifics regarding scheduling and details would be, really be up to the facility manager with the, with the Tinfish manager to coordinate those schedules. But those are the general areas that are tenant use and then shared use.
Last question. I know the contract mentions or lists, states hours of operation. Would you care to explain what those are going to be and whether they're seasonal or year-round?
Absolutely, Member Bennett. We are interested, as is the Tinfish, in operating a year-round restaurant at Braemar. We're very excited to offer more outdoor recreational opportunities during the winter at Braemar than we've been offering in the past. And so the Tinfish is committed to operating a restaurant year-round. We want to be somewhat flexible with them in our programming and our hours, and making sure that we're providing the best service for our customers and providing the most efficient business operation. But it is very clear that we want to run a year-round restaurant at Braemar.
What will the summer hours be?
Summer hours will be starting in the morning at 6:00 AM until an hour after the last tee time, at a minimum. And if, if demand shows the need for, for longer hours, more extended hours, it is certainly something that we would consider.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. A quick question for you. We've got a five-year, proposed five-year term here with two similar renewal periods, both at the option of the tenant, if they're not otherwise in default under the lease. And I think some folks in our community would, would think, yeah, Tinfish, great operator. We're excited to have them here. But why didn't we do an RFP on this? Why did you just go about the process of selecting Tinfish as opposed to going out to see who might be available as an operator?
Mayor Hovland, we, we started discussions with the Tinfish several months ago. And as I, as I stated in, in my PowerPoint presentation, we had several criteria that we were very interested in meeting. And we really felt very confident that the Tinfish not only met, but exceeded, all of the criteria that we had on our wish list for, for an operator at Braemar. We really feel like the Tinfish is the restaurant that is going to help us improve the brand of Braemar Park. And as we furthered discussions and negotiations, we just felt very confident in, in our ability to make this agreement with them and make it a successful, long-term operation.
Thank you. Members Swenson.
Well, one of your points was, we wanted someone that had worked in the public realm before. And I think that's a very good point. I'm very supportive of this. I think it's a great idea. And having more winter activities there will enhance the use. It's funny, because just this week, we got, or at least I got, an email from a woman who lives in the Cahill area, wanting to know what we were going to do about the Cahill area. And my response to her was a little bit about small-area plans. I think Member Brindle maybe responded to her, too. But the other thing I told her is that we had this proposal coming before us tonight. Her response back to me was how excited she was, how excited she was for her family, but also that they've already gone to happy hours Friday nights, and they don't golf. So there is a interest in community people being in that kind of space. We did a study of that building along with our golf course a number of years ago. We said, and we were told, don't tear it down. Lease it out to somebody else to do a better job than the city can do, that can attract a better quality of food in a bar area, so that people that play there and people that live around there will enjoy it. So I think you've had a great solution, and I'm very supportive of this. And if it's time, I will move this issue.
All right, you can move the matter.
I'll second.
We've got a motion to second to...
Wait a minute, we have a pen in the air.
I'm, I just wanted to, I, I think it's important that we, that we do take a second and reconnect this to the greater context of what we've been really working at all this year in 2014, has been, how do we improve the future of our, of our golf enterprise and golf facilities in the city? And we've worked on some things that have, have not brought us together, that have been difficult. But I'm hoping this is something that could bring us together. And this is one of the items that we talked to you very early in the year. We were subsidizing every Scotty Special we served in that place. And, and while 12% might not sound like a big change, or a, a big margin, you got to remember that we were below 100%. We were operating in a loss. So this is probably a 20, maybe even a 30% turnaround in, in the financial condition of the grill. So we think if you, if you look at it from that context, this is a big change, and it's something we had previously told the council we wanted to improve and wanted to outsource, in particular, this particular function. We feel very fortunate to have attracted a vendor that has this kind of name recognition and performance that Tinfish has. So, and we do want to get this project moving forward, given the, the time of year, this is the time of year to do a, a project at the golf course. And as you all know, we've got other golf course projects to, to begin to focus on, too. So we hope you can support it tonight.
Thank you. We've got a motion to second. We're in discussion.
Yep.
Member Brindle.
Just, just a couple, a couple words from me, and that is, we know that golf will continue to be played at Braemar. And we know that time is a limiting factor for people in how much golf they can play. And that translates into less revenue for golf. So this, to me, has meant a rejuvenation of Braemar. It's a diversification. People are going to come there for one reason or the other, or both. And, and it, it, it never fails that when something new opens, the, it's flooded with people who want to experience it, become excited about it, may never have been at Braemar before, and this is, this is what brought them there. So I'm, I'm very excited about it. I think that, thank you, Ann, for the hard work and the long, long haul of, of pulling this together. You've got some great partners bringing into our community, and I appreciate it very much.
All right. I thought Manager Neil made some great points, you know, and hearkening back to Edinburgh, where Ann used to work, and then she became our park director. We had some challenges over there from an enterprise situation with a staff-driven proposal with some refinement by the council. We ended up taking something that was losing several hundred thousand dollars a year and has a positive cash flow. That's our same goal with the golf course, again, primarily a staff-driven proposal. This is one of the elements of what I think staff thought was important to the revitalization of our golf operation and getting it back to a level of subsidy that all of the council members in our community could be comfortable with. So first step along the way here, from a building standpoint, and we have a motion to second, all those in favor of 4O, which is entering into the restaurant lease agreement with the Tinfish folks and the city. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie. And I noticed we have Sheffield Priest and Athena Priest in the audience this evening. I don't know if you'd want to come forward and talk a little bit about quickly, very quickly, about coming to, coming to Braemar. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How quickly would you like us to speak? We're excited at the opportunity. And we have loved working with Ann.
And Bill.
And Bill. And it's been a, a great thing. And to hear your encouragement is exciting for us as well. We're, we feel as lucky to have been sought as you feel to have attracted us. So we're excited to do it. And we think that it poses a, a unique set of opportunities to, to do some real good.
All right.
Throughout, throughout the whole process, Ann has been really expressive in that what you're trying to create is a community destination. And in our vision of everything that we've done, it's just trying to serve people. And we admire what her vision is and what your vision is. And we certainly hope that we bring that to your facility.
Good. Thank you both.
Yeah.
Look forward to it. All right, Member Bennett, you had the next one, too, which was P, which was a proposal for purchasing architectural services to do the work that we need to have done to audit the Braemar clubhouse.
We may have covered these in the last, do you want to talk a little bit more about what's contemplated for the building, I guess? We've, we've talked about the lease before and the business arrangement, if you, and we've looked at the spaces. But if you want to talk a little bit more specifically about what is contemplated to be done to the spaces, that was my intention in pulling it off consent agenda.
Yes, Member Bennett, I would be happy to do that. We have several items in the building that we would like to take care of, many just in terms of updating. We certainly have some renovations that need to take place to get the restaurant space ready for the Tinfish to come in and, and do their, do their renovation. But we also have some updating that we would like to do in the clubhouse, to brighten up the space, to make it much more updated, much, much more customer service friendly. We would like to change the lighting. We'd like to change the carpeting. We'd like to change the tables and chairs. We would like to change the entrances. We would like to potentially change the sliding wall in between the, the two rooms to make it, you know, potentially an open window, French door type of, an environment, so that you can see events that are happening on both sides. We would like to update the entrance into the banquet space. It's pretty dark in day... It's pretty dark and dated. We would like to update that, we'd like to update the restrooms, make them more accessible. Potentially, we would like to redo siding on the exterior of the building and update the roof on both the clubhouse and executive course buildings. Many of these updates that I'm mentioning are functional, several of them are, are things that we just feel are going to make our customers feel more welcome in the space, but generally it's going to be a significant improvement to the building.
Good. Questions from other council members?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second on 4P, which is the request for purchase of architectural services, Sporiz, Reiners, Architects Inc., Braemar Clubhouse, same architectural firm I think we used for the Hornets Nest, if I remember.
Yes, Mayor Hovland, that is correct.
All right. Any other, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carry it. All right, now we are on to the special presentations portion of the agenda. We have no recognitions this evening, and we got Jordan Gilgenbach from our staff with us, who's going to talk about the public comments that he received regarding dog parks. Jordan, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Like Mayor Hovland said, I'm here tonight to talk about the October discussion on Speak Up Edina, which focused on dog parks or off-leash areas in the city. Again, speakupedina.org is the city civic engagement site that we've been using since June 2012, and we're heavily using it this year and into next year as part of, as part of the city council's strategic priorities to increase communication and engagement with our residents. During the October discussion, we asked three questions, specifically, should we add more dog parks or off-leash areas to the city? Where would you suggest adding them? And whether or not residents use either of our dog parks now, and if so, what they like best about them. This discussion was opened from October 1st through November 3rd. Forty-seven total comments were made. We had a large spike in visits for this month, for, we had 1,800 visitors, total 2,700 visits, and almost 9,000 page views. As a side note, there were several other discussions that were happening during this month, including the sidewalk plan, Vision Edina, and a couple others. Forty-one percent of visitors visited more than once, and all of the respondents were from Edina. This is a comment summary of, of the comments made on Speak Up Edina. The comments were back and forth, there wasn't really a clear add more or don't add more. Anything from, it's not the city's job to find the fund for the pets. They'd rather, a lot of comments focused on that they'd rather see improvements made on, on Ben Valkenburg Park and that dog, and that OLA area there, rather than adding more, such as eliminating the steep or the dangerous terrain around that area. Some people noted that people don't clean up after their dogs, and that's especially, they were noting in, in parks along walking and running trails and bike trails, and not necessarily in the dog areas. They said that Ben Valkenburg is, is inconvenient or out of the way, obviously being in the far northwest corner of the city, it's not convenient for somebody who lives maybe in the south area to get to. There are, other people noted, there are several, there are many other parks in the city that aren't used as, as much by families that they see, even ones with some new park equipment. Others noted that Eden Prairie has, has good examples of, of some good dog parks and how they could be structured. Centrally Located is another example of what they'd like to see if more are added. We do have Strakauer as a, as a seasonal dog park, it's the boarded ice rink that's used throughout the summer for a dog park, but obviously closes in the winter to be an ice rink. Another option was using Weber Park, the woods there, as a, as another dog park. They did cite that dog parks create a nice sense of community, and, and a lot of people said that they've made a lot of friends with, with other neighbors and other residents from just the socialization that happens there, and that if people are required to vaccinate, leash, license, fence, and clean up after their dogs, so it's helpful for something like this, especially in a fully developed community and not a more rural, rural community, to have a place for dogs to be more active and to socialize. And that in general, another comment said that dog parks are, can be inexpensive to set up. You set up some fencing, post a sign, and there's your dog park. I mean, it doesn't have to be a, a large one, like you saw with Strakauer Park. And one idea that did come up that was interesting was, was possibly using the, the vacant land or the unused land underneath and on the basis of water towers. So the next discussion for November that's currently going on, we're talking about residential fire sprinklers. This one is open until December 1st. As you may have seen, in October, they became, I believe, state fire code or state building code, that all homes over 4,500 square feet are required to have residential fire sprinklers. This discussion's more, goes even a step further and asks if the city should require them for all new, new single-unit residential constructions, regardless of the size of the building. What residents, if they think that the benefit, the potential benefit outweighs the cost of the system, and if they think that the sprinklers would help decrease the number of fire calls or maybe major structural problems that the city sees. And then coming up next month, we're looking at having a discussion about plastic bags and the possibility of banning them. I know that other, other cities around the country that have looked into that and have passed such measures, so.
Good. Questions for Jordan? Comments by council members? Continue to have very interesting topics for us to think about, so I'm glad people are speaking up as well.
Yep.
Thanks, Jordan.
Thank you.
Next, we're in the community comment portion of the agenda. Does anyone in the audience wish to come forward and comment of a matter, on a matter of concern to them that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening? Yes, yes, ma'am?
Council, Mayor, my name is Joyce Mellem, and I live at 4506 Arden Avenue. I'm also on the Heritage Preservation Board, and I'm here tonight to bring your attention to the violation of the city resolution that the city council issued back in April. It's Resolution 2014, Number 43.
You're bringing this matter to our attention as an individual? I take it, not as a member of the Heritage Preservation Board?
Yes, as an individual, right.
You're not here authorized by the Heritage Preservation Board to appear in front of us?
That is correct.
Thank you.
No. I wrote a letter to the city council, and it's on your website at, at line 92. It's a three-page letter, which explains my position on this, and it also has five-page attachment. The resolution from the city council back in April of this year indicated that the house at 4505 Arden Avenue was not to be torn down, but substantial change to the street-facing facade was allowed. Going forward, then, I, I laid out the history, the recent history in my letter to the city council, and then all of a sudden, on October 27th, 2014, a wrecker came in and down went the house, total demolition. So my neighbors and I, several of us, are quite upset about this. We don't understand why the city staff allowed this to happen. In my letter, I indicate the city staff that was involved, and we would like the city council to take appropriate action on this.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor.
Come to the side, would you, please?
Mayor and Council, my name is Scott Pusson, with Great Neighborhood Homes, a resident of 4615 Wooddale. The correspondence you have in front of you regarding the property at 4505 Arden, I feel is just another attempt to harass both myself and the owner of the property at 4505 Arden. You know, we, we are attempting to build a new home for a family on Arden Avenue that the neighborhood will love, and it has been approved by the Heritage Preservation Board, and they have been working on this for four years. I, I think there's nothing wrong with someone like Ms. Mellem having her opinion about something, you know, whether extreme it is, you know, she feels we should really be focusing on the very extreme of preservation, that's fine, and, and she had her piece. But I think to, you know, draft a correspondence for the city council to defame myself, and I, and I think basically, and it says someone there, there that she wants money from me, to me is just beyond belief, and I feel just, just the final straw in this ongoing attempt to, to fame myself and the client and their effort to work with the city on, on building a new home here. I just, I just think it just has to stop. I mean, it's just been a bullying of my client. She's got her neighbors calling my client at 9:00 p.m. at night, harassing her, telling her she should move from the neighborhood. You know, and I've kind of put up with it up until now, but I've kind of had it, and I'm just to the point now, I just think it needs to stop.
All right.
I think we, we built seven projects in the neighborhood. I'm proud of the projects we've built there. I think they, they fit well with the neighborhood, they follow the plan of treatment, and I just think I've kind of had it with, with the harassment. I think, you know, for a board member to draft a correspondence asking for me for money, and I'm not a legal expert, but to me, it just seems a bit fishy, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pusson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a concern they want to express to the council that's not on the agenda this evening? I should say regarding a matter that's not on the agenda this evening? All right. We'll move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, and we've got some exciting news this evening, and we've got Mark Ruff with us. We, we sold some general obligation refunding bonds, and Eric is going to lead off the discussion, and our senior financial advisor, Mark Ruff, from Ellers is here to talk to us tonight about the sale of those bonds. So Eric, go ahead and lead up.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I just want to say one more thing.
No.
You need, you need to come up, you need to come up here, ma'am. You wanted to continue, you wanted to be part of the, you wanted to be part of the community comment?
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right.
It's just me, Greg, I just wanted to say...
So come to the side podium, please, and give us your name and address.
Carol Hancock. I live right next door to 4505 Arden.
Thank you, Carol.
And 4503 Arden. Thank you. I just want to say that I fully support Joyce Mellem on everything she has said and has observed and all the facts that she has collected. I don't think there's any truth to what the builder is saying, and we were in the total, we had no idea about any of the demolition, tear-down of next door. Okay? And I, I think he's violated a lot of the rules.
Thank you, Ms. Hancock.
Thank you.
Director Roggeman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So I'm just going to say a couple words to introduce the bond refunding that we did today, and then I'll, I'll bring Mark Ruff of Ellers, the city's financial advisor, up here to discuss the details. But just going back to October 21st, at that council meeting, the council called for a bond sale to refund four outstanding bond issues with the intent to take advantage of favorable interest rate environment. So since October 21st, staff and Ellers have been working on the issue. Ellers opened the bids today, and Mark Ruff's going to talk about the details. What we're asking the council to do tonight is to adopt a resolution awarding, awarding the sale to the bidder, and if all goes well to plan, the bond issue will be closing on December 11th, so I'll bring Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Roggeman.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good to see you all again this evening. I did hand out a packet this evening. As council is aware, when we take bids for bond issues, unlike construction bids, bids for bond issues are only good for about 24 hours, and so we did take bids this morning at 11 o'clock at our office. I am happy to say that you received eight bids, and the low bidder is, I just want to be clear on this, .87%, so below 1% on the bond issue. As Eric mentioned, this is a refunding or just another name for refinancing. We are not restructuring, we're not changing the payments of the original four bond issues, it's just simply to, to lower the interest cost. I'm pleased to say that you saved slightly under $1 million of interest cost, and these bonds only, you know, the average life of these is four years, and so it's a very short-term bond issue. Primarily, the savings are going to benefit your utilities, your sewer and water system, because that's the majority of the debt that we are refinancing, but also the street fund and a small amount of tax levy also will be benefited through this refinancing. The number of bids and the low interest rates are a function of the fact that you have the highest possible rating. You have AAA ratings from Standard &amp; Poor's and Moody's. Reminder that not, the state, the Minnesota does not have a AAA from either rating agency, and I think the federal government, if last time I checked, was still below a AAA from Standard &amp; Poor's. So you certainly have a credit rating and attributes that are very attractive to bond, to bond investors. That's the reason you get low interest rates, that's the reason that you, that you were able to achieve these kinds of savings. Ratings are not just granted. Once you get a AAA, it doesn't stay that way. In fact, we've had cities and counties in Minnesota that have been downgraded from AAA, and they've been paying their debt on time. It's just, is a function of several factors that rating agencies look at. I have attached the copies of the rating reports to the, to the council packet, and certainly would encourage anyone curious about that to contact Director Roggeman, and he can give them copies as well. But I will highlight a couple of things out of each report. Rating agencies watch several things that cities do. One is what's your market value growth look like? The fact that you're doing redevelopment, you're showing positive market value increases are credit positive for you. They make sure that you approve, and at the end of the day, meet balanced budgets. In other words, you're not spending down reserves, that you carry healthy reserves. To emphasize the earlier point about Braemar, they also watch carefully your enterprise funds, specifically your recreation funds, and they've been watching your golf operations and your arena operations for several years, and continue to make comments about that, but also compliment you on the, on the improvements that you've shown in terms of year-end results for those. And the last thing is that they do pay attention to the amount of debt you have, even though debt is only about 10 or 15% of your rating, it is a factor. And so they do comment on that as well. You have, I would say, the only area where they would say that you're a little higher than your peers is the amount of debt, and I'm going to talk about that in a moment, but I think one thing that Moody's does well is they say things like what could cause a rating to go down. They try to forecast those things. And so for you as a city, the specific things that Moody's says that potentially could move your rating down would be an erosion of the tax base or the socioeconomic profile. Socioeconomic profile, meaning the wealth and income of your citizens. Second thing that could potentially result in a downgrade would be significant deterioration in general fund reserves, inconsistent with similarly rated credits. So keeping cash on hand's very important. And then the last thing, substantial deficits in enterprise funds resulting in increased general fund support. Both rating agencies show no indication whatsoever that you're on that list of concerns for them. In fact, Standard &amp; Poor's makes the direct statement that says that they anticipate no change in the rating over the next two years. So again, not an easy thing to get AAA ratings, not an easy thing to sustain those AAA ratings, and I really congratulate you as a council, and I will also certainly compliment the transition you've had from a longtime finance director to Mr. Roggeman. It's been flawless in our mind, and certainly the rating calls that we undertook were, were very well executed. The, the other thing that I will just say generally about the city, and I know this issue has come up in some discussion, is the mayor has previously asked just to talk about debt generally and the debt levels for the city, and so I did bring a chart So the top part, this is also, this page is also on the back of your packets. The city has around $100 million in outstanding debt. It's important to note that the majority of just over half of that debt is supported by your utility revenues and by special assessments. So over half of that amount is really not supported by taxes, so that's number one, very important factor. Probably even more important, and this is a, again, a credit positive, is that within 10 years, 75% of that debt will be gone. In fact, over the next five years, you're going to be amortizing, you're going to be paying off $9 to $10 million per year in debt. I don't see the city issuing $9 to $10 million of new debt per year over the next five years either. And so your debt load is going to be dropping, and the rating agencies make a very specific point about both of those factors. And also, not only the amount of principal, but the lower chart shows your annual payments of debt also drops dramatically over the next several years. I do not see, and the rating agencies have not pointed out, your debt levels as a concern. I just know it's been a question of the council in terms of what does our debt profile look like. Certainly, not many cities have made the kind of investment that you have in facilities and recreation over the last several years, and again, the fact that you've maintained those AAA ratings is a credit to you as well. So the last thing I will say is, is that we did reduce the size of the bond issue. The bidder that won the bids was Piper Jaffrey. In the packet is a list of all eight bidders. In the packet is a list of all eight bidders. They were very close together. But Piper Jaffrey did bid a premium bond, meaning that they're giving you more than the par amount of the bonds in exchange for a little bit higher interest rate over time. So the adjusted par amount, the principal amount of the bonds, is $12,720,000 instead of the original estimated $13,485,000. And again, those savings I mentioned in excess of $900,000 are after all fees are paid and will be realized by the city over the next five years. So with that, certainly would recommend that the council approve a resolution. The form of the resolution was in your packets with the adjusted amount to Piper Jaffrey.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Ruff? Comments? Member Brindle.
Looking at the debt profile, Mark, if you'd help me understand this.
The top graph shows our principal outstanding, and it gets less and less and less. That's based on today's debt. That doesn't assume that we're not going to have debt in the future.
Correct.
Okay.
That's absolutely correct.
I just want to make that clear, that this is going to change. Year to year, this is going to change because it's a healthy, I mean, it's healthy for us to borrow. It's very inexpensive for us to borrow. So the thought that our debt is going to continue to fall and fall and fall might look great, but I don't think it's realistic because the cost of money is so small.
Point well taken. Thank you.
All right. So we've got a formal resolution in front of us, providing for the payment of not $13,485, but $12,720,000. With that adjustment to resolution, 2014-144 is a motion to adopt a resolution.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion, a second, to adopt resolution 2014-144, which authorizes the issuance of the general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2014B, in the amount of $12,720,000. Further discussion? And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks for the.
When do we get rated again? We get rated in June.
So the ratings usually come at the time that you issue debt. If, for some reason, you didn't issue debt for a year, year and a half, the rating agencies would come back to you and ask you for more information, and they would do their own assessment. But typically, we do it every time we issue bonds.
So we did it this time.
Okay. Normally, we get a bigger report on it, so I just didn't say that. So obviously, it wasn't a huge.
The calls were very short, relatively half an hour, and certainly were more just concerned about the year-end projections and really didn't ask any greater questions. So nominal concerns.
Appreciate that.
Good. Thanks, Mr. Ruff. Mr. Milner, you have the next matter, which is the survey results from the 2013 street reconstruction projects that we performed.
Mayor, members of the council. Thank you. I prepared for the public hearing scheduled for December 9th. We felt it was good to go through the results from our 2013 street reconstruction. We surveyed the residents after every project. The survey was done early last year, included the projects of Braemar Hills B, which included Gleason Circle, St. Patrick's Lane, Lake Edina, Mendelson A, and the Normandale neighborhoods. Following the survey results, I'll give an update on one of the concerns we got from a resident in the Mendelson A neighborhood during the assessment hearing from October 21st. So the first question, which reconstruction project were you in, which would be shown here, the majority of them are from Lake Edina, but that project was double the size of the other ones. This just shows we got responses from all our neighborhoods, which is nice to see. How effective was the communication you received prior to construction? We had 70 to 87%, very effective to somewhat effective. And on the left, right-hand side, it's showing the 2012 results for comparison. You can see the improvements from year to year. Last year, we got a question of what we do with the results. We try to make improvements to our communications in other areas, and here you can show those improvements are being effective. Question three, how effective was the communication during construction? You can see the mailed correspondence and the weekly email updates are very effective, somewhat effective, at 86%, 81%. Again, all five categories improved from 2012. Question four, project is funded between city utility funds and special assessments? Were these project costs explained to you in a manner that you could understand? And approximately 2/3 of the responses said it was. That's an improvement from 2012, or only 42% said they understood the specific project costs. Question five, did you find the open house beneficial in addressing your concerns? Overwhelming majority of the ones that attended felt it was, at 51% versus 7%. And again, an improvement from 2012, where it was only 29% felt that the open house was beneficial. Question six, how effective was the project team in working to minimize your level of inconvenience? In 2013, it was 81% was in the very effective to somewhat effective versus 76% in 2012. During construction, did you know the name of your city representative? 70% knew the name of their representative versus 50% in 2012. So again, improving those communications so they know who their city representative is during construction. Question eight, during construction, aside from weather-related delays, did the project team provide you with ample notices of water shut-offs, driveway access, et cetera? And in 2013, 87% said yes versus 70% in 2012. Any phase of the project, did you experience conflicts? 56% said no in 2013 versus 41% in 2012. Some of the comments, phone disruption, pet fence and sprinkler damages, some talk about the storage of construction equipment as some of the conflicts they experienced during construction. What aspects of the project met your expectations? The communication, the friendly and accommodating project team, to name a few, the new infrastructure, orderly, well-planned and executed. Versus question 11, what aspects of the project did not meet your expectations? Cost, some of the restoration concerns we've heard here recently, inconvenience factor, and the noise dust that we always get concerns about. Did the final result of the project meet your expectations? 2/3 said yes versus in 2012, 56% said yes. So an improvement there on meeting the project expectations. And question 13, do you have any comments, input, or suggestions how to improve the street reconstruction projects? Better communication. There was a suggestion about having an open house after the end of the project to address some of the concerns remaining after construction. They felt the weekly email updates were the best form of communication, some streetlight comments, and of course, if we can complete our projects in a shorter timeframe, they would like that. So we'd like to thank the residents for their patience and participation in our projects. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments from the council.
Thank you. Member Bennett.
Thank you. I noted that at least six of the responses from the Lake Edina project noted disappointment that the sidewalks that had originally been discussed for that area were not built. I think one was West Shore Drive, one was Normandale in location. And I guess I just wanted to observe that. I didn't see that on the list, but that struck me as significant. One person talked about fear that his resale value or their resale value will not be what their neighbor's is because young families will be looking for a neighborhood more conducive to that kind of movement. That seemed to be the only neighborhood where there was a concentration of comments on sidewalks, but I did see comments in a lot of the different projects as the answers were broken down, project by project. People disappointed about lack of improvement in the street lighting, that they had been looking forward to improvement in street lighting. Do we know what can be done going forward to improve that outcome? I think one person said that it seemed to turn on the opinion of one person because it was an almost even split in their neighborhood. I think it was maybe 49 to 51, and wanted to know if that one vote had been the other way, what would have happened. So I don't know if you have any comments on that this evening, but that struck me in particular.
Yeah, two things on that. You know, we do look at the surveys, and typically, we see a majority don't want streetlights. There were a few neighborhoods in that 2013 that had that, right around the majority. Again, it comes back to funding and overall street lighting network, and that's a thing we're looking at, continue to look at, is there a way to fund streetlights and looking at those surveys. Another way we're going to start addressing the streetlight question is in the living streets plan, the implementation plan, to see if there's a way, what should our lighting levels be on our local streets and what shouldn't be. So that'll be looked at further in the next few months as we continue to work on that plan.
Is any objective measurement? I know that we can get measurement of traffic volume. We can get measurement of percentile speed with the tubes on the roadway. I know we can look at a history of crashes. Are we measuring the amount of lighting? And we know the location where the lighting is. Do we know what that then translates in terms of walkability? Is there any kind of scoring mechanism that gets employed for street lighting?
We don't do that today. Typically, we only illuminate the intersections. There is illumination standards for pedestrian-level lighting, but the question that we're looking for is that the service we want to provide to all our streets within the city of Edina to provide that 150-foot to 200-foot spaced lighting along all our streets. So that's, again, a question we're going to address during that living streets plan is what service level should we provide for lighting on our local streets?
Thank you.
Good. Other questions, comments? Great to see the trend line, I would say. You've got to be proud of yourself and your staff, your interaction with some of the other companies that you're working with. I'm sure you're overseeing what they're doing and how they're interacting with our residents, and it looks like we've got a nice trend line going here. And those weekly updates are apparently really critical for folks, and I think much appreciated.
Yeah, I think it's been a joint effort with the communications staff on getting those communications out and getting the proper information out and proper presentations at all the open houses we have and stuff.
Well, thanks for going through the effort of doing this. It's a very useful tool, I think, both for your department as well as for the council.
Yep. We'll be doing the surveys for our 2014 projects, hopefully here in the next couple of months.
All right.
Another round. And I have one update on the Mendelson, if we're down with the survey.
All right, go ahead.
So there was a resident in the Mendelson A neighborhood that had concerns during the assessment hearing about the restoration of her front yard.
Correct.
We said we would report back to you. Individual lived on Belmont, Belmore Lane. And we met with that individual and came to an agreement that we're going to come back in the spring, replace all the topsoil for that person, six inches of topsoil. She does not want us to seed it. She wants to seed it, maintain it herself. She feels she can do that, but she was really interested in getting new topsoil. So we'll for sure do that in the spring. We'll meet with her again in the spring and offer to seed her front yard and see if she's still of that opinion. But we're for sure going to be doing that, six inches of new topsoil for her and make that right for her.
All right, good. Thanks for that good customer service.
Thank you.
All right. Next matter before us, that was just for informational purposes. Incidentally, no action required. We've got a second reading on ordinance 2014-18. Director Teague, has this mattered?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a ordinance that you approved on the first reading in regard to front street setbacks, first-floor elevations for tear-down rebuilds, elimination of the minimum and maximum unit size for multifamily apartments, and lighting. At the first reading, you had requested that we prepare some examples of average of the block so we could consider that as an alternative to the average of the home on either side or matching a home on one side. So we've provided eight or nine examples there in the packet. So as you see, it would provide a little extra flexibility for a front street setback. It's not going to address all of our, make all of our variances go away, but it certainly does add a little more flexibility. I was talking with the city attorney before the meeting, and if the council is comfortable with this and you were to approve this, we would suggest adding one word under, let's see, it's section 1, 1A, 1 and 2. And it's in the paragraph that we added that allows the choice. So it's, so in addition to the average of the home on either side, we've added the, or the front street setback shall be the average front street setback of all, and the word that we're suggesting you add is all other dwelling units on the same side of the street between intersections. When this was part of the code previously, we didn't include the existing house on that lot, so we just wanted to make that clear. So we're suggesting.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah. So we're suggesting that. We've also provided the minutes that we're missing from the last.
That was both with respect to 1A, 1 and 2?
Oh, correct. Yep, 1 and 2. And so we've also provided the minutes from some of the discussion that talked about the minimum and maximum apartment size. As we talked about last time, we're mostly seeing our requests for developments within a PUD for our apartments. And we are, as part of that discussion, we've suggested building units or the units be larger to accommodate that three-bedroom kind of scenario. So taking these minimums and maximums out may help us get there as well. So with that, if the council's comfortable with this language, we would recommend second reading.
All right. Member Brindle, any questions?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. There are so many repeated words in this, and I understand why, because we want to make sure everybody understands that we're talking about this same facet on the same street, on the same side of the street. And so my suggestion with regard to setback requirements in section 1 is to provide some illustrations of when you are speaking of this scenario or that scenario, is to have something to look at. When I'm looking at other city websites, when they're describing something that is in this detail, some of them have illustrations, and it really does, it really does help, help to make it clear if we've got residents and architects and builders reading this, to make sure that we get to them the, what we mean. I would suggest having some illustrations on that.
We have seen, I have seen that in other ordinances where they've provided those illustrations. Not exactly sure where they come from, if it's their consultant or if staff draws those up, but we could sure take a look at doing something like that.
Good. Thank you.
Member Swenson, anything?
I'm going to move this, but I think Member Bennett had something to say, so I thought I'd wait.
Are we going through section by section or the whole thing?
But if you have some more questions, go ahead and finish up your question.
Okay. So looking at the first-floor elevation, it's on page 3, it's number 8 in the ordinance. The readability is my concern here, and that is in paragraph 8. Single dwelling unit buildings, the third to the last line, must meet one or more of the first three conditions listed in 8A. And 8A is a paragraph, so I have to look at what are the three conditions, and I have to find where each of the conditions starts. So clearly, the first condition starts with the first word, and then I'm supposed to get that the second condition starts after the semicolon, and the third condition starts after the next semicolon. So I would appreciate it if this could be delineated out as A1, A2, A3. And so it's more obvious that those are the three conditions. That's all I have.
All right, good. Member Bennett.
Thank you. I support that. I support the reformatting as well, and I think they're good, they're good conditions, but having them be clearer to read would be helpful for people consulting the code. I'm also struck with the wordiness of the setback rules, and I'm not quite sure, not quite sure what our goal is. If the idea is that you're going to have it be the average, that there's the default of 30 feet, if there are dwellings on the block, that it's the average of what's on the block. Now, I know we've gone to whether there's something on one side or whether there's on two, but I'm not sure what that gains us in terms of clarity and enforceability. I think the real challenge with how to say what you're trying to say is houses facing the same direction on the same street. Because you've got a house that looks like it's on the same street, but it actually faces the street 90 degrees to the right. And so I think that's where the wordiness comes from. I actually parsed out number 1, 1A1. I parsed it out and wrote it out myself, and it does make sense, makes perfect sense. But the wordiness of it is a little overwhelming until you do that, because But the wordiness of it is a little overwhelming until, until you do that, because there are, there are three clauses there, and they make total sense when you look at each clause and how they relate together. And that's where I think the illustration comes in.
There was another issue that you were concerned about.
Right. Well, the other, another, another issue, well, I have a short list, but looking at the example, for instance, for Wood End Drive, in that instance, I appreciate Member Brindle's clear language, but houses facing the same direction on the same street, you've got the same street, but you don't have the same direction, because the street actually takes a curve, a fairly significant curve.
Oh, right, but the point is they face the street.
They face the same street.
They face the same street.
Yeah, so then with, it just seems, it seems neither clear, and I don't know what we gain in enforceability, and that's, that's my concern. That I know we've worked on this, and the one that really caught us was the one where you were drawing lines parallel to the street, and that one, because it was a geometrical impossibility, and because a builder willfully, I think, misinterpreted it. And that is not what we're working with right now, we're working with other language. And I know that some residents have raised the concern about going back to the average of the dwelling units, but that seemed to be, you're either at the default or you're the average of the dwellings facing the same street, to use Member Brindle's language. And I don't know what the extra language gets us.
What's the language in the ordinance?
Well, it's in the ordinance now, and we're adding to it, and I'm not sure what we get for either clarity or enforceability.
Yeah, that's our intent here, is to, to draft an ordinance that's clear and that we can enforce as staff. I, I think we've got there with this. We've, at least, we've eliminated one of the alternatives. There's now really just two. If pictures would help, we could, we could, we could do that.
I think it's important to have the average, because if you look at the situation on Wood End Drive and you look at forty twenty-four as being set very far back, and if you didn't do an average, and the house at forty twenty was going to be torn down, where it had to be rebuilt, would be farther back from where it exists today. And that would not, and yet, it meets today the average probably on the street.
Where there's a significant difference, though, where you get really wide swings, is if you're just looking at the homes on either side, rather than looking at the full average.
Right, which is why I wanted the average put back in, because I think it avoids us having then to be giving variances because of awkward situations where it makes no sense, i.e. that house that we looked at on Blake Road that had been built before the house next door, and they wanted to add on, and the house next door, too, was to build very far back.
Well, it was around the corner, actually.
We have the new house on Tracy Avenue in the new subdivided lot. One of the houses chose to build way back. The house on the corner now is incredibly impacted if it were to be rebuilt because of that. So I think it makes sense from not having to send houses to a variance all the time, because there's one weird placed house on the lot. So I think the average is important.
And I'm, I'm actually supporting use of the average, because I think it's clear and I think it's enforceable. Where I get into, where I have concern is the, we are allowing people the option of choosing, it appears, either that average, the default, the average. So four, we're back to four alternatives, or they can, or, I guess, one of them isn't an alternative, it's only alternative if there's only a home on one side, the one abutting property option. But with the two abutting property options, then you either can pick your average of those two setbacks or the average on the block, and you can get some really different results depending on what you're looking at. I worked, I did the math on all of the examples, and for some, like Tracy Avenue, it didn't seem to make, I think, much of a difference. For Rolling Green, Rolling Green Parkway, there was one where the difference eighty-three instead of ninety-four, if you looked at the two houses on either side. Otherwise, or I guess ninety-four would be what you got if the house on either side, because eighty-three is the average. Indian Hills Pass, seventy-one and a half instead of a hundred and twenty. I mean, that's a huge swing, depending on choosing a method. So again, with clarity and enforceability, it seems that we've set up a system where people can pick what they wanna pick to get the result they want.
Yep, we have. You're right.
And how, how does that balance neighboring property rates?
Well, if you're looking-
Well, if it's an average, it's within the realm of the area.
Right.
It's not gonna be any closer than an existing house.
No, but she's talking about the reverse.
Right, right. I understand.
Right. But Mary has a point. It's not gonna be any closer than the average on the block, and it's not gonna be any farther back than the one next door, so I think it's perfectly reasonable. I think the choice is good, and I'll support this part of it.
Okay, can I move on to the other, the other sections that I have? And with respect to the unit sizes, the lighting, I have absolutely no ambiguity about, or concern about, and I, I think it's, we're past time. We've been talking about it for years. I do have a question for Roger, and that is, Attorney Knutson, we have some correspondence on the diocese this evening from someone whose neighbor, new construction, has a sport court next door. Will this lighting limitation, when it goes into effect, impact existing, for instance, landscape lighting or patio lighting that people have?
Existing lighting?
Yes.
That'd be grandfathered in.
So existing lighting does not have to be brought into conformance with new regulation?
Unless it's changing a bulb.
I would think that in most instances, it could be as simple as changing a bulb.
And then when the bulb burns out, they would have to replace the bulb.
So it would be complaint-driven enforcement by the neighbors who are being bothered by the light?
That's what, the normal, yes.
Okay, and again, it's measured at the property line of the property generating the light, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So then we have an answer to that correspondence, which is, depends on whether or not it's bulb-related. With respect to the unit sizes, I think, I appreciate staff putting together the packet. I did manage to find things in paper record, and I, looking at the past conversations, I think it's, it appears that Edina at some point set the limitation of the lower unit size for multi-unit residential. And the upper limit was only added when the council at the time was adding planned senior residential as a type of affordable housing. And one question that I have for my colleagues and for staff is, what do we get when we, if we eliminate those regulations? So we're eliminating what Edina for a long time has had as a minimum unit size for multi-unit housing. And they also had a restriction, most of the planned, most multi-unit had a restriction on efficiency units could not constitute more than ten percent of the units in a multi-unit building. And reading all of those numbers together, it looks like where they came up with their limits for planned senior was that the one-bedroom units for planned senior, again, the affordable housing for seniors, were actually as small as the efficiencies were allowed to be for other multi-unit. And that's why they said, I think, no efficiency, because you were already having people live in units that were smaller compared to other multi-unit living. And it did, it does seem that there was this choice or balance struck with affordability, allowing units to be small but no smaller, I'm sorry, large but no larger, but also livability, the small but no smaller. So what we're proposing to eliminate is any restriction whatsoever, either a minimum size for any kind of multi-unit housing, or a maximum unit size for the planned senior. How does that help the city meet its housing goals?
How does eliminating it hurt?
Eliminating?
Well, because we've had this, again, historically, and I'm happy to have the conversation, but historically, I think we've had a desire to have people live in livably sized things. Director Teague talked about how a lot of the stuff that's coming to us now is larger units. There is no problem with larger units in non-planned senior residential housing. They can create them as large as they want, with as many bedrooms and dens and whatever. The, the size limit on the large, on this upper limit was only for planned senior, and again, I think it was to guarantee that the developers who were building that kind of housing and being able to build less parking would be building units that would be livable for their tenants. Obviously, this doesn't meet what we're seeing now for assisted living, and that's where we really, I think, ran into problems, because there were projects approved and built that frankly didn't meet the code, that had-
So then that tells you that the code currently isn't written in a way that works for that environment. So then what is wrong with, with making, with eliminating that?
Well, one option, and I asked about this five years ago, or asked for it five years ago, would have been to look at different regulation for planned senior, would have been to look at what we needed and wanted as a community for planned senior. Did affordable housing for seniors still matter to us? And if so, were, how were we going to encourage it and regulate it?
I don't think it's the size that has, has not allowed us to move forward effectively with affordable planned senior. I think it's the funding. I don't think the size has anything to do with it.
Well, again, I think the original ordinance, which developers have taken advantage of in terms of not building the parking that they're required to build with other multi-unit buildings, and also building, in some cases, smaller units than they would have to build under the other planned residential, the other multi-unit regulations. So we've had developers taking advantage of a code that was written for affordability, but not building affordable units. And I'm not a fan of cynicism or allowing something to go forward, but again, I'm asking about housing goals, because I think that these things were chosen, that the limits were established, when they were established, in a somewhat thoughtful way, and I just wanna be doing what we're doing today, also in a thoughtful way. And if we're saying that in the city of Edina from henceforth, it doesn't matter. Build as many small units as you want, build as many large units as you, you want. I'm just asking the question, how does that meet the goals that we set in our comprehensive plan?
You and I just disagree on this, then.
It may, it may give us more flexibility, actually, with respect to potential affordable housing investment, if they can, if they can not worry about the minimum size, whether it's for seniors or otherwise. It may, it may have a correlative impact. I'm not sure it does. I think it's more of a funding issue, but we've seen in the most recent one with Beacon, the, the cost per square foot was a factor probably for the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, as they looked at that relatively high cost per square foot. So it, it seems to me that we can look at these sizes of these, of these apartment buildings, these multi-family units on a, on a one-off basis when we get them. Think about the, the overriding comp plan or the zoning, where we talk about so many dwelling units per acre, a particular floor ratio. Those are the things that are gonna probably drive us so, like at the senior assisted living facility on sixty-five hundred France, we got eighty units per acre, if I remember right. At the Lennar site with the old Wicks Furniture Site, we're about sixty-five. Down the way, we might be forty. But it's those individual projects that are gonna allow us to determine whether or not the, the comp plan and the, and the zoning that's in place drives what happens there, as opposed to the individual size of the units that are allowed.
Well, every one of those has been a PUD. So if you wanna control it-
Yeah, that's another great point.
You're controlling it.
That's a great point.
You can choose to control it by what you approve on your PUD, so-
Well, they're not, they're not, PUD hasn't been subject to these regulations. I'm just, there are, there are places, cities all around the country where you can rent what's called a microunit. And I think, I think that our predecessors on this body did not want this to become a home of microunits in their day. And I guess are we saying that we don't care? Because it doesn't, it doesn't, smallness doesn't necessarily guarantee affordability. I think we're, we're seeing, seeing a market, a fairly strong market. Right now, it's strong for apartments. And I, I just wanted to make sure that in having this conversation, we knew what it was that had been set, why it had been set, and what it was that we were saying we didn't want anymore.
I hear the reasons for your concern.
Well, I guess I would pose that question to Bill Nuhendorf and Carrie Teague of whether, whether it's wise for us to say, well, in Edina, here are our minimums, or is it wiser to look at what the market is doing for that style of housing that's designed for that segment, transit, TOD, Transit-Oriented Development? That is gonna be a specific formula designed for that type of user that is there because it's a high transit, a high mass transit area. In contrast to a place that, an apartment building, if you will, that's placed in an area that is not in a transit area. So I, I think it's market-driven to me.
Yeah, I would concur with that, that let the market dictate unit size, the city can regulate density, and we can get affordable housing, housing through our goals through the PUD, which is something Planning Commission's gonna be working on laying out more clearly what we're looking for as part of the, the PUD, affordable housing, sustainable design, engaging the street, those kind of things.
Kelly, have you? I'll take a pass.
Okay.
Well, you, I mean, Carrie, you could comment on the thoughts from the Planning Commission, too, I suppose, and you probably have before, but what the Planning Commission was thinking about when they made this recommendation to the council.
Yeah, you know-
The chair, the chair is actually here, so we could bring it forward.
He is here, but we didn't have a lot of discussion on it. We made the decision, well, I think it was even long ago, to eliminate those things, that it would be regulated through the PUD, allow a little more flexibility. I don't know if there's anything that Chair Staunton would like to add, but-
Before he gets to the microphone, in our, on our way to PUD, we had other, other rules. We had density guidelines, and most of those are now long in the dust. Yes. Behind. And so I think this in part goes to, it goes to what are the obligations as well as the potential benefit to developers of building. We are not talking about eliminating the beneficial parking ratio, even though we know that the, there are people who are still employed, who live in, in assisted living. It really makes that range. So we're keeping part of the ordinance, and I think it also goes to just what people are asking for in the community or saying in the community, where are the, what are the standards, and what can people rely on, what are the ranges? So Chair Staunton?
Good evening, Mayor members of the council. I didn't come tonight to join you any earlier than I would otherwise be, but it's good to be here. To Carrie's point, I think this is something we've talked about changing for a long time, and our feeling is that it's obsolete. Our feeling is that markets change over time, and what might have been appropriate at one time, you know, was before all kinds of different things. If you think about senior housing, you think about, you know, we used to do either nursing homes, or you'd do independent, and now we do this full-spectrum kind of senior housing. So that's just one example of how the market changes.
And rehab.
Yeah. So we felt like it wasn't, it wasn't productive for the city's regulations to be in the middle of what the market's gonna choose, and the market'll police itself in terms of the size of the unit, and if you make it too small, somebody's not gonna, not gonna wanna rent it or buy it. If you make it too large, somebody's not gonna wanna rent it or buy it. And every time we try to calibrate that, over time, that becomes obsolete, and, and we just didn't see that it was providing a productive regulation any longer.
Do you know what other cities do, whether other cities script what the sizes ought to be?
I defer to Carrie on that. I don't, I don't know if we have, if you had minimums that you just carried.
Yeah, I've never come across a city that has minimums, maximums for apartments.
Okay, thank you.
He has that.
Then may I direct a question to Roger, and that is, so again, understanding that there was, there is no maximum, there's never been a maximum unit size, except for planned senior. Do other communities have planned senior? Remembering that planned senior also excluded convalescent homes and care homes, really explicitly, every iteration of the ordinance. So it was intended only to be apartments of a certain size for seniors with, I think they had a density bonus that was written into every iteration of the ordinance- they had a density bonus that was written into every iteration of the ordinance, and also that parking bonus that was written into any iteration, every iteration. Do other communities have that?
They have senior apartments, if you want. They don't use your terminology, maybe some do, but there's variations on that, yes, in other cities.
And how do they regulate them?
On size, they don't. The units, they don't.
Okay, what do they allow in terms of bonuses?
What do you mean by that?
Well, because the code, as it was written, had, well, every iteration had this bonus for parking. You had to build, you were building, allowed to build significantly less parking than you were required to build for any other multi-unit building. And it also had a bonus for density. You were allowed to build greater density than you could build for any other kind of multi-unit housing. And that's still in our code. If we change this, that's still in the code.
Sitting here, I'm not sure they have bonuses, maybe they have reduced parking requirements, but I'd have to review it. It doesn't come up that often. I'm not aware of any other bonuses.
Okay, thank you.
I think the, the chair and some of the other folks on the council did a good job of articulating why it's a good idea to get rid of this minimum-maximum. Not only the, the market driving what gets built, but us being able to react to that market and trying to get what we want out of it with the use of PUD. Because that's what, that's, as Member Swenson said, I thought was a great point, that this is the way these projects have been advanced now in the Southdale District, is on a PUD basis. And we've been trying to figure out some, some pathway that's good for us and good for them. And that gives us a lot of flexibility from a tool standpoint, and I think this, on balance, is a good idea, especially when we hear from our city attorney that nobody else does this but us.
Yeah, I spent 10 years on Planning Commission worrying about, do we have enough parking for everything? I spent another 10 years here worrying about parking, and very rarely have we ever been off-parked in an apartment or like the Waters or anything like that. I do remember after they built the Waters, they thought that they would be renting out more medium and smaller-sized units, and now the large ones went first. So the market does tell developers what they want to see. So, you know, yes, we have parking restrictions that are less for, for senior housing and, and things like that, but never have I seen them be inaccurate.
I think you're going to get your real test on Yorktown Continental and Masaba, that project. I think that's where you're going to see.
Okay.
Because of the way that it was parked historically, the affordable housing part of it, and the loss that that has experienced, not in spaces, but the reorganization, the shifting of that location with the same population. So it, it will be interesting to see going forward. I guess I would have preferred a more comprehensive look if we were going to got part of the Plan Senior, and I hear the discussion, I hear the reasons for that. I would have wanted to look at the whole thing and to look selectively at part of it that suits the market, but not look at the rest of it seems to me incomplete. And I still, I, I have concerns as well about the front yard setback. I agree with Member Swenson and, and I think all of my colleagues, that using the average does make sense. But the wording of this, I think, is not, at this point, going to be clear. I'm also, I, we've been in trouble with four options before. We're keeping four options. I understand that we got rid of the really bad option, but, so I, I think that the only part of this that I can support wholeheartedly is the lighting change. I do support her wholeheartedly, but I'm not going to be able to support the other two parts tonight.
And I'm on a proof second reading of ordinance 2014-18.
With the changes recommended by Director Teague?
They're in there.
With the additions?
Yep.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Carrie? I think we will see a time when we have micro apartments, but I don't know if we'll be alive.
I hope they're affordable.
Well?
So moving on?
I guess that'll be up to the city council. It's in place at the time, look at the affordability component or percentage of it. Ordinance 2014-20, amending chapters two and 28 concerning, wait a minute, I'm one ahead of myself here.
You're one ahead of yourself.
Concerning permits, this is 2014-19.
Yes.
Permits for municipal parking facilities. This is an issue that we discussed at our last meeting. Member Swenson had some good recommendations with regard to the lower level of the South Ramp. And Mr. Nuenendorf, go ahead.
Yes, sir, good evening. This is, this is ordinance 2014-19, along with an accompanying policy change. We, after our first reading last, at our last meeting, and the suggestions by council, the directives, we made some adjustments to the ordinance, we made some adjustments to the policy, and bring this back for you this evening. What this calls for is a tiered permit system at 50th and France. That would have the regular permits staying at the same price, $10 per month. But this year, adding a, actually for 2015, adding a premium permit would allow, which would allow employees to park at a higher price, $25 per month, but to park in some of the most desirable places. In addition to that change, we would also allow the issuance of daily permits for temporary customers or for temporary clients that are there for more than two or four hours, so they could park in the designated employee spaces. And then the third policy change is a shift reverting partially to where we were a year ago, and that would be to reallow, would be to allow some employees to park on the roof of the South Ramp. Not in the entire ramp, but just in the designated spaces. And again, the goal here is to have the, the best spaces reserved for customers and having the employees park in some of the less preferable spaces, showing that we're focusing on the customers in that district. I have to stand for any questions.
We did get an email supporting the change to $25. Actually, she was kind of offended it was that low, but, so there are people that did listen to the conversation. I thought that was pretty interesting.
All right. Other questions for Mr. Nuenendorf? Member Brendel?
Thank you. Do we have any intention of setting a schedule of when to look at this and, and adjust prices and adjust how this is working in the future?
That's a great question. So as of about a week ago, our wayfinding system was fully operational. So now we can monitor the, frankly, the minute-by-minute usage of those parking facilities. We are able to pull reports, whether they're daily, weekly, monthly. So the thought, based on staff, is to monitor the current situation for the next several months, kind of see how we're doing. Our, our holiday season is our busiest time. So the thought would be to look at the data in the spring to see how we're doing parking regarding pricing. In my opinion, we're still underpricing these permits. The cost to maintain these facilities comes in about, depending on how you do the math, $26 to $37 per space just to maintain it, just to keep the lights on and keep it in good repair and good condition. So we're still, in effect, subsidizing the use of those parking stalls. That being said, in suburban locations, it's pretty rare to charge the full price for park, for parking. I would hope that we would review the numbers in the next year or two. But I think at this point, we've made substantial improvements to the capital infrastructure. Our business community has agreed and, and in fact demanded that we do a better job of maintaining those facilities. They're willing to pay that price. So I think we should be good for the next two years, but I think we should revisit it after we have some, some history behind us.
Member Swenson?
I'm hoping that we revisit the parking numbers before a year or two from now, because we're sitting on the Edina Realty site. And I actually would like to do something with that, whether we sell it, use part of it for parking, or use all of it for parking. I'd like to not be sitting two years from now and still, I'm hoping that our, the data that you get will show us if we're close to max or not close to max, and we maybe can sell the Edina site if we need to, or whatever it is we need to do. But, so tell me that will happen with your numbers. I'll be happy. Otherwise, I'm going to ask you to do another parking study, and it'll be sooner rather than later.
I, I think that's a wise, a wise suggestion. With the Edina Realty property, I think, I think after we have a few months of history during, during the busiest season...
Right.
It's time to go and look at those numbers and look at the usage. The reason that we've been holding off with expanding parking is because we didn't know exactly how big, how big to make it.
Right.
So I think with one holiday season behind us, we'll have some good facts to base decisions on. And I think that decision-making becomes even more important as we prepare to, to take ownership of the Hoot and Cleaner property in the next month. We should have that piece as well. So same question, how do we want to use that property? Might be best to schedule a work session in spring and have that conversation.
Would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Nuenendorf?
I'll, I'll move second reading of ordinance 2014-19.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion to second on Resolution 2014-19, which amends chapters two and 24 concerning permits for municipal parking facilities. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the changes to the ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carrie? And Mr. Olson? You've got some suggestions for us in terms of another potential ordinance change.
I do. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for considering this tonight. Ordinance number 2014-20 would allow us the ability to introduce a surcharge onto the utility bill. I'm happy to report that over the last three years, we've been successful in entering the homes of over 14,000 residents within the community. We're now down to 17 properties that we haven't been able to gain access to, to change the meter out. As you recall, back in January 2012, we implemented this, or awarded the contract for the meter replacement program. It was almost a three-point, or over $3.6 million project. As I said, we've been successful in getting into a vast majority of the property owners' properties in order to replace those meters. But like I said in the report, we've made no less than 10 attempts to try to reach into the properties that are still remaining. And we're requesting that we grant the first reading, waive the second reading, and adopt the attached ordinance to allow for the surcharge to be added onto the utility bill, which would amount to about, would amount to $50 a quarter. And that fee would then be introduced at the December 2nd rates and charges case or report.
Questions for Ms. Olson? Member Swenson?
Isn't it in the best interest of the city and the property owners? Well, maybe more the best interest of the city since, but the 19 or 17 units that we haven't been able to replace out, we're not going to have parts and their battery operation is going to go. So we basically have no ability to monitor the water. So if we have no ability to effectively monitor the water, why isn't it turned off? I mean...
I don't come here with that as a first option, and I certainly appreciate that as one of our potential solutions. But our hope is that we are able to write a letter to these property owners and with the city attorney's help and let them know that this is how we're going to move forward with getting the meter changed.
Okay. My fear is that we're going to be, a year from now, and it's that you, delinquent utility day, where we get the list of delinquent water bills, and these 17 will be on it because they won't pay it because we've now charged them $50 more. Now, I know there's one woman who's afraid that there's some terrible raise or something coming off this water meter that will hurt her, but are...
There is an alternative meter available for those customers, and there are other cities in which that alternative is made available as well, and she also pays a slightly higher rate for it.
She does. There's actually a $20 per quarter meter reading fee.
So she's been solved.
Some of it.
There are 12 out of the 14,000 that have opted for the alternative meter reading, which means that we have to manually go out there and read the meters every, every year.
We don't know how accurate that meter is, though, and we can't maintain that meter.
It's a new meter.
Yes.
That's a different situation from this discussion.
That's different than this situation. This situation is we simply, we've been able, in those 12 occurrences, we've been able to change the meter, but we have to actually go out there and touch the outside of her house with a touchpad to, because there isn't radio re-technology.
Those 12 are not counted in the 17.
They are not.
All right, this is a first step in a, in a process. We're down to a handful of residents that haven't cooperated with us here, and I think this is a fair way to handle it, wise way to handle it. I think we'd like you to think of this as an interim step to taking the final step, which is a turnoff. But if we can accomplish, if we can, if we can accomplish the, the meter change with this additional disincentive, we'd like to do that.
Oh, I'd like to accomplish the meter change. 10 letters and 10 contacts is an awful lot of effort and time to put into these, and I'll support your idea for an interim amount of time, but there becomes a point that if, if all of these people, or most of them are on the delinquent utility bill next year, I'm going to want to know that.
How did you decide the amount at $50?
Honestly, the amount was derived because if we have to go out there and manually knock on their door to try to get the, them to open it so that we can go manually read it, it's going to take some time for us to do that. And we thought it was commensurate with what kind of activity we would have to do in order to get the meter reading estimated.
Member Brendel?
I was just going to comment that there is a built-in timeframe in which, in the previous discussion on the parking rent fees, you wanted a report within a certain time. In this instance, you will get your report no later than, actually about a month ahead of this next year. So in 11 months, you will know how well this, this is working, and beyond the interim step can be chosen at that time, if it needs to be.
Yep. No, all right.
My question is, water is a basic need. Can we legally turn off their water?
We can.
Yes, we can. We do have the ability to do that with our ordinance. I wouldn't recommend doing it during the winter months because that could then have more drastic effects of idle water and freezing pipes. So I would hope that we could get this, these 17 properties onboard by next spring, and, and we won't end up with them on the delinquent utility bill accounts.
To remember Brendel's point, do we know if any, do we know the, enough of the background of these 17 account holders to know if we're facing a situation like, for instance, the one that we encountered with the assessment hearings, where the property, city staff had to go in, and I think there was a firm hired to go in and clean up the premises? Are we talking about that kind of property, or are we talking about somebody who's ignored letters? Does staff know what we're looking at?
I couldn't really answer that question because we haven't gained access to the homes, so I don't know. Maybe that is a consideration. But certainly, if we write a letter to them and explain to them their options, maybe that will allow us to, again, gain, I, I can't answer that question. We haven't gained access to these properties.
This is a little afield, but is there a county resource that if, is there any kind of clearinghouse or coordination where you have information from your water accounts? You may have information from your fire department, or you don't have information, and the county has information? Is there a way to coordinate so that people don't get to a point of desperation or...
We don't have quite that level of intrusiveness into that personal space at this point.
Not so much personal space, it was almost more a coordination of government data, frankly, which would avoid going into the personal space if it didn't need to be intruded into.
I think, in my experience in doing the same project in two other communities, you know, you, you get down to the point where you've got far less than 1% of folks that probably have, could, that may have an mental illness, they may have some criminal enterprise in their basement they don't want us to see, they have folks who are concerned about their civil liberties. I mean, there, there's a lot of different niches out there of, of folks that you run into when you get from 14,000 down to 14.
But if they're not letting you change out the water meter, why are they going to let you come and read it at the $50 charge?
They're not going to. And that's what we found, is that we'd have to make numerous contacts with them to try to get access to their property, and that's why it's $50 and not $20 a quarter.
So we're not even getting readings off these meters anymore?
We are not. We are estimating, and that's, that's the thing that kind of scares me, is that we, we, we don't have an accurate meter reading. And right now, there are a few of those accounts that are still transmitting. The, the radios aren't, or the, the batteries aren't dead. So we are still getting accurate meter, well, we're, we're still getting readings.
We don't know. We don't think they're accurate. We don't know. We don't think they're accurate because it proves that the other ones that we replaced weren't all accurate.
Right.
Okay.
Do you want to, Member Swenson, do you want to report back from Mr. Olson within, after three months, after the first quarter?
I, no, let's give them a couple months. I think you've got to give them a couple quarters, but I'd like a report back maybe still in warm weather to see how effective this has been, so we can have another conversation.
Could you calendar this for six months from now?
Absolutely.
Come back and tell the council where you are.
So this is, this is all residential?
Two quarters.
This is not any businesses?
All residential.
There's nothing commercial in here?
No. All the commercial has been done.
Okay.
And as of September fifteenth, it was about a hundred and forty, so it's down to seventeen. We've been working really hard to get all of the meters replaced, and we've made numerous contacts with these individuals.
I'll move twenty fourteen dash twelve and include second reading and waive second reading, excuse me.
Dash twenty, you mean?
Twenty fourteen dash twenty, sorry.
Second.
With a waiver?
Mm-hmm.
Second reading. Okay, thank you. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Roll call, please.
Member Brendel?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Hubbleton?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we have some options on board and commission interview dates. Chair Stotan, would you tell us again? I haven't looked at my telephone. You've got some scheduling issues. And Councilmember-elect Stewart, you want to come up too and tell us if you've got a schedule issue here?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Stewart and I have, have looked at the dates, and for the three of us, the fifth, the tenth, and the twelfth all work. I don't know if how that jives with the...
Fifth, tenth, and twelfth.
Of those, the tenth. Of those three dates, the tenth works for me.
And not the rest?
Well, I could make them work.
I don't know if I want to ask you why. It seemed kind of...
Well, I teach. Actually, I have Thursday evening rehearsal. So I can make them work if I need to.
Would the tenth be easier, the tenth, twelfth combination?
Don't we need three?
We need three, and then we can add one more. I was thinking of, at the back end.
After the twelfth?
Yeah.
I'm out of town for ten days after the twelfth. I'll agree to come to the twelfth, but I leave at five in the morning on the thirteenth.
Why is Monday, February ninth not on this list, Karen?
Well, new member, Stotan, is that a Monday? Is that an okay Monday?
Yeah, the ninth is okay for me.
Okay.
I could do it Monday, the ninth.
If it's nine, ten, and twelve, I can make that work.
That works for both you gentlemen.
It's a winner.
Okay.
Nine, ten, and twelve.
Very good. Thank you.
What time are we starting?
What time should we start? Five thirty?
So we'll just say evening nine, ten, twelve.
Correct. It will depend on how many applicants we get, exactly sort of the hours that we book for the interviews themselves.
Okay.
Well, but I think there, there should be a date or time certain that we start. I mean, I, I can't come here at four, four o'clock in the afternoon just because we have a full slate of people.
Well, let's start at six.
So if we start at five thirty or five?
Maybe Deb can tell us when we've started previously.
I, I think starting at six is too late. I think we have started historically at five o'clock, and sometimes we've had to push you to interview until nine or after nine in order to get them all in.
All right.
And that's with ten-minute interviews.
Is this a full slate of interviews, though? Is this, or is this for open seats?
This is open seats.
Of, of midterm open seats, or is this?
We've got eleven known vacancies.
Right, right.
So far.
This is your normal new applicant interviews that you hold.
It is. Okay, okay. So this could be...
You may have some of the people up for reappointment that don't choose to be reappointed, so...
Okay.
Yeah, I think you, we can anticipate some busy evenings. So five o'clock, work for people?
Yeah.
Member Swenson?
Yep.
Okay.
By that time of the year, that'll work.
February ninth, tenth, and twelfth, starting at five?
Yeah.
So you got a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, to hold the board and commission member interview dates, member interviews on the following dates, February ninth, tenth, and twelfth, beginning at five P.M.
And I will be out of town for the February seventeenth council meeting.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. And we are on to Resolution two thousand fourteen dash one forty-five, accepting various grants and donations.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution two thousand fourteen dash one forty-five. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. A very generous grant this reporting period to the Edina Park Department from the Edina Federated Women's Club, five thousand dollars. Legacy grant for the Edina Sculpture Garden. Very, very generous on the part of the Edina feds. And I think they have their annual fundraiser in January, and I think we can expect to be a recipient again for public art. All right, correspondence petitions, anything other than what was out with, on the dais this evening with us?
We do have two petitions that were, were as part of your packet. Just noting those.
Do you want a motion to receive both those petitions?
Yes.
Do you want, can be a joint motion? All right. Got a motion and a second to receive the petitions at eight B and eight C. One is regarding a petition for a sidewalk installation between fifty-two hundred and fifty-three thirty-six Halifax Avenue. The other one is receiving a petition regarding street, potential street reconstruction, Indianola and Juanita Avenues and West Fifty-first Street. Any further discussion? All those in favor of receiving those petitions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. And we are on to aviation noise update. Member Bennett?
Thank you. There is a noise oversight committee meeting tomorrow at one thirty at the MAC offices, Twenty-eighth Street, south of Highway sixty-two. And there are some topics on the agenda that should be of interest to members of our community. One is the staff report, Metropolitan Airport's Commission's staff report on the noise monitoring that took place over a two-week period with temporary noise monitors, one located in the city of Saint Louis Park, two located in the city of Edina. We had anticipated, actually been told, that a presentation would be made to our council before this was made to the noise oversight committee, but that was, we were not contacted to set that up. So we will be pursuing that. We'll try to get that on the calendar before the end of the year. But this is not the order that we anticipated for the information becoming available to the public.
I think both Mayor Andrew Neil and I will be there tomorrow.
That's great. And just a couple of highlights from that report. There were actually four days during the two-week, or three days during the two-week reporting period where no flights whatsoever flew over one of the two monitoring stations in Edina. Two days with no flights one of the, on another, for the other monitoring equipment. They recorded a general level of fifty-five DNL, which in Europe is considered the standard at which mitigation or reduction of noise, that's considered an impactful level. So I think even with the information we have today, and then also with some volume information that was sent to Mayor Hubbleton this summer, I think it is important for residents to note that their perceptions, that there is an increase in overflights, and that there is a certain steady level of noise. Those are both valid perceptions based on the data that we have collected. We also know from some correspondence that the city of Minneapolis held with the FAA that the runway use system, which changes the directions of departing and arriving flights when wind, um, wind conditions permit, that that system is not being employed. And that's another topic on the agenda tomorrow that would, will be of interest to people. We've tried to share posting of the meeting through Nextdoor today to try to reach as many people as possible. But there will be a dialogue with the FAA on flight controls and why some of the decisions are being made, that are being made. And again, we will try to get that noise monitoring discussion here at City Hall, so people can attend that. People are welcome to send their questions to us. We will be addressing some questions during the meeting tomorrow. And last point is that there was a hearing held in Washington in the House of Representatives on Monday, and work on the aviation bill that we've been speaking a little bit about has actually begun. It will be completed, the plan is during the next year. And so people should continue to be in contact with their elected representatives at a state and federal level where a lot of the decisions that impact airport noise and airport use in Minnesota are made. Thanks.
Good. Thank you. Mayor Andrew Neil, anything?
Nothing more, other than as Councilmember Bennett indicated, we do intend to request the MAC to send representation to a future city council meeting to present the information from the study, from the noise study that was done late summer.
Good. Member Swenson, anything? You'll be going to that meeting tomorrow, so look forward to your report. All right. Member Brendel, mayor and council comments?
Okay. Looking at the minutes of the various commissions that do amazing work for us and keep us informed, looking at the Community Health Commission, one of the items in there is about Drug Task Force Youth Chemical Use, an area that has been worked on by Kathy Iverson over the years, and she is retired. And I'm just wondering if we have a plan for continuation of that work? I note that the Community Health Commission is looking at, possibly coming into the Crime Prevention Fund for support for a drug task force position as a replacement for Kathy Iverson. And so I sent that idea on to a couple of members of the Executive Committee of the Crime Fund and just said, here's something that's been mentioned, so we get it on our radar as an organization to see if that's something that we feel is in, in our charter, as something we would be involved in. So just noting that. And then the I-494 Commission, we're in the process of gathering priority projects from the member cities. There are five member cities on the 494 Commission of Edina, Richfield, Bloomington, Eden Prairie, and Minnetonka. And each city has projects that they, county roads, state roads, whatever they might be, that would involve MnDOT and/or the Met Council. And they, the projects also include mass transit, BRT routes being the Bus Rapid Transit routes, that kind of thing. And so right now, we are in the process of listing the projects that we feel are priorities in each of our cities, rating those projects in priority order, and then coming together with those projects and as a commission determining what projects the commission will promote this year during the legislative session at the State Capitol. Expected to be a session that handles a lot of transportation. It's what we hear from our lobbyists from Messerly and Kramer. So could be an exciting year from a transportation standpoint. So, so anyway, that's where we are at this point. The project that I expect to be on everybody's list is 494 thirty-five W interchange, which is definitely on the radar of MnDOT. We just want to know what the design is. We want to know what the timing is, and, and the breadth of it, whether it goes, whether it involves Sixty-sixth Street, whether it involves, goes far enough south to involve some of the, some of the alternate routes at that, at that point. But everybody should know that that one is coming. It's going to be wonderful, and it's going to be very painful in the interim. So that, that I expect to be on the list for all the cities. That's all I have.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
Thank you. This is a busy season of meetings. And one meeting that I was happy to attend last week was an update by the League of Women Voters Edina on their position on youth use of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. They have sent a printed copy of their, their update report to the council. It is in the correspondence packet. The study committee members included Kathy Iverson, also Colleen Feige, who previously served on the Edina School Board, Suzanne Kerwin, and Lonnie Scrantner, a former Edina High School teacher. Someone, anyone who wants to find a copy of that report online can visit the League of Women Voters Edina website at L W V edina dot org. So again, in the council's correspondence packet, but also available online. And they, both the chemical health coordinator position at the city level, and also the high school position that has addressed chemical health issues are open at this point. And I think that that was one of the topics of conversation following presentation of this report. People are concerned and interested to know what the city and school district will be doing with these positions.
Both? Full-time positions or part-time positions?
I can't speak for the schools, but our position, our relationship with Kathy Iverson was that of, of a private contractor, almost. So she was not, was not a formal city employee. But if I could, if I could address that, because it's come up now with four, two of you, we, we have been having a discussion with the school district about how we could best address these issues, given that they contribute, that they allocate money for it, and we allocate money for it. So we have been talking about, are we in a better position to address that, or is the school district in a better position to address it?
Or do we hold it, or do we do it jointly and share it the way we do community health with Bloomington and other things?
And that's, that's, that's seems to be the path that we've been going down. So there is an active discussion going on with both groups, and, and we intend to, to put some proposal together and bring it back to our respective boards and, and the board and the council for, for approval. I don't have a sense of, of how soon that's coming to you, but it is.
Yeah. Appreciate you working with the school, though, on that.
Yep.
Historically, pardon me, on that, historically, the person at the school district has been, has been full-time, and it's been chemical health coordinator and mental health in one position. So looking at, we were talking earlier in the work session with high school students about the need to address mental health for high school students who could be on the edge or in risky situation. And so that, that may indeed be part of this position or being dealt with separately in, in more of a public health position. I don't know. So, but it was joined in one position before.
Another meeting of note was held at the Weber Park Shelter last night to discuss the potential future of the Weber Woods currently owned by the city of Minneapolis in Saint Louis Park and Edina. And that was a meeting held, held for the Morningside Neighborhood, but also open to others. Most of the people attending were Edina residents, some from outside the neighborhood. There were over seventy, sixty-nine people signed in, and a number of us did not sign in. We asked for a show of hands as to who was from Edina and then Saint Louis Park and Minneapolis. A compliment to Manager Neil, who conducted the meeting, the longtime head of the Minnetonka Vista Neighborhood Association in Saint Louis Park, said that she did not think she had attended ever a better managed public meeting. I think that the people who came prepared to speak, got to speak. It was an open dialogue with a lot of questions and answers, and people are looking forward to what the subcommittee on which Member Swenson and I will be serving with, three members of the Saint Louis Park Council, which is a larger group than ours. That's why they get three and we get two. Anyway, looking forward to those conversations. And Minneapolis has extended that date, the action date, to the thirty-first of December?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And I think for those folks who are attending other meetings and disappointed to see some of us not there, please know that we are out in the... of us not there, please know that we are out in the community. There are some things that have been on the calendar for a long time. It's a busy time of year with a lot to be done. I know we all are reading all of the correspondence that we receive, and I believe all of us as well have made field trips out to the area, areas that are under discussion. So we certainly are getting the information and following concerns and getting answers to questions. Thank you.
Member Swenson?
I agenda that same meeting, Commissioner Bennett.
Well, we had, after we met on the 3rd of November, we had an election in our community, and we had five terrific candidates, and we had two people emerge that are going to be terrific additions to the city council. Both in the audience this evening, Bob Stewart, a lifelong lover of Edina, recovering CPA, recovering lawyer, active businessman. He's just got a grin on his face a mile wide, and it'll be nice to have him here.
It's only because he doesn't have to doorknob anymore.
And then, of course, Kevin Sutton, that we all know so well from all those wonderful years on the Planning Commission and leading the Grandview Study. We welcome both you gentlemen and look forward to swearing you in in early January, first meeting in January. And then on the, see, a couple days later after the election, or I guess one day later, I toured the progress at the Southdale Medical Center. The project manager had me come over, and I went over and I went up to the top of the new five-story ramp and looked around and saw what they were going to do in terms of building out the building. Now, I think they've got a planned occupancy for June of 2015, and they're working diligently on that. On the 7th, at the request of Mayor Chris Coleman, I attended the 84% Coalition Meeting, which is a, was really a transportation funding meeting that he had sponsored, trying to bring in mayors from around the state that are concerned about some of their secondary roads, the non-MSA roads, and how to fund all of the improvements that they need to have done, things that we face, and we will face again in December when we do these special assessments. So that was an interesting meeting. And then on the 8th of November, which was a Saturday, we are the proud home, I would say now, of the first retail operation for Blue Cross Blue Shield in the state of Minnesota, which is over across from Cub on York in that small strip mall. And this is a type of facility that they've run successfully in Florida. The new president of Blue Cross Blue Shield, who lives in Edina, by the way, kids at the high school, wanted to test the water for a retail pilot here in Minnesota in the metro area, and they chose Edina. So good luck to them with that. And then, let's see, on the 10th, we had a meeting here with the county on the bumpouts on Zirchease Avenue, and we hope we can not only maintain the efficacy of those bumpouts, but also maybe help on the aesthetic, or the lack thereof, lack of aesthetic quality on those bumpouts. The county has promised to work on some ideas for us. May include some planters, they'll work on it through the winter, and then we'll see some, maybe some ideas towards springtime. Veterans Day luncheon on the 10th, and then again on the 11th, I attended a Veterans Day luncheon at Locker Elder Suites on York at their request, and quite a few vets there, and it was really interesting to visit with them. And then in that, that morning, or early, I went over to Good Sam to visit with the, I would say, the remnants of the Kiwanis Club that still meet regularly once a week over at Good Sam.
Oh, I've met with them. They're a great group.
Yeah, they are. It's a terrific group. And then the 13th, I was part of a roundtable group for Waddell and Reed at Pinstripes, asked me to speak about what small business, what local government does to promote small business. On Friday last, I attended the Veep Gala. We had walk with the mayor on the 15th. And then just last night, we had sidewalk meetings, but then, go ahead, we also, before I attended the sidewalk meeting over at the Senior Center, we had National Merit Scholar event that I got invited to, and I wisely kept my program. And we're going to show the picture of all of the commended and national merit semifinalists from our community. Sixteen of them, national merit semifinalists, 37 total, 21 commended scholars, and a couple of achievement winners as well. And amongst the array of students in there, hate to single her out, but is a Stewart, Leah Stewart. And I'm sure your dad, Bob, is claiming all the credit for how smart she is.
It's her mom?
Or the mom. So it was great to see all these kids, and I always love hearing what they have to say about their teacher, because they invite their favorite teacher from their entire school career. And then the teacher stands up, and the kids express how that teacher was helpful to them in the course of their education, K through 12. So, great event. And that's it for me. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got a list, and I'll try to pop through it as fast as I can. Legislative update, we traditionally have a session with our state legislative team. We have scheduled that for January 6th, which is your first work session in January. Happens to be the opening day of the session as well. Representative Erichhardt and Representative Rosenthal have RSVP'd that they will be here. Haven't heard from Senator Franzen yet, but I would expect her to be here as well. I think that we did, we included the MLC legislative agenda in your packet, in the back of packet? Does that sound?
It just came today, though.
It just came?
The legislative.
Well, we, I think we, we should have included the draft, the draft copy. And I didn't see it in the back of mine, but I'm hoping that you have it. If you don't, we will get it to you. You still have plenty of time to look at it, but that's generally what we have based our legislative strategy discussions on, is that particular agenda. If you have additional items that you'd like to kind of put on that agenda for discussion with legislators, they always appreciate a helpful heads up if you have something you want to discuss with them. So give that some thought between now and then, and I'll make sure that you get a copy of what our MLC legislative agenda is before then. The council's direction to staff was to schedule a town hall meeting, so we have done that for Saturday, December 6th, 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Senior Center. 10:00 to noon at the Senior Center. And we've talked about that previously, but I just wanted to let, get some feedback from you in terms of how you want that town hall meeting to work. What we have done in the past is we've left it as an open agenda. We've handled it somewhat informally. We don't tape it. We do do some media to let people know that we're going to be there. But I just want to make sure that's still what you had in mind when you think of town hall meeting. Okay?
I think also that the practice has been to allow people to submit questions on cards if they choose, but also bring them up during conversation from the floor. And I think that give and take is really appreciated and has worked quite well.
We'll have, probably we'll have, yeah, I'm trying to think of that room. We should probably have sound there, you think, or does that not necessarily?
Necessary.
Okay. We'll have somebody there to take notes. We'll have somebody to...
Member Swenson will sort the cards.
Okay. Will. That's right.
And avoid redundancies and find the questions.
My employment agreement with the city says that you'll do an annual performance review of my performance.
My favorite, yes.
Yeah, that's good. So we, in the past, we have employed Harry Bruhl to assist you with that. If you are still comfortable with him sort of serving that coordinating role, I will get him moving on that.
I think it's consistent.
Do you need him?
Do we need him, or do we have a conversation? I mean, do we need Harry?
It depends on how you'd like to do it. So in the, in the past, we've done sort of a modified 360 where you get feedback from, you get your own feedback, you get, you measure that against feedback from the leadership team, and also then from employees, from kind of a survey of general employees. And then you take all that information, and he gives you some interpretation of it, and then we have, then we have our dialogue. If that's what you'd still like to do, he's, he knows how to do it. You know who he is.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
We'll try, I want to try to, I'd like to try to do that in December so that the existing council members who are leaving have a chance to chime in on my future.
And what was it that that resident said at that meeting last night, that the next six weeks were so easy?
Yeah.
So what do you want to put into December?
I'll, we'll remind you about that.
Maybe following street reconstruction night, that's really a fun thing.
I'll try to schedule that at a different time. December 5th is a Friday night. It's the grand opening of Braemar Field and the backyard, and we hope that you'll all come. There's a 6:30 to 9:30 with a 645 ribbon cutting or something of, something of that nature. But that's, that'll be a big night for us, and we'll be able to enjoy that new facility. Finally, I thought I would just let you know that occasionally we have discussions with council about our role in the conduit financing, so the nonprofit conduit financing, and we talk about whether we should or shouldn't, or how we do it and how we don't do it. We did play that role in the rehab loan for the Yorktown Continental.
Right.
And our, our, our take, I don't want to use that word. The percentage that we earn for serving as the nonprofit conduit is one-half of 1% of the total loan, which in this case was 25 million or so. And our piece of that was $110,000. So that's what we will get as a general fund, general revenue as serving, for serving as that role, as the conduit financing vehicle. So we don't have that money yet, but we will have it when they close their loan, so it will be before the end of the year.
Cool.
That's all I've got for you.
Good. Anybody else have anything that triggered? Karen?
I just wanted to give a quick update on Vision Edina. In addition to the public meeting that will be tomorrow night at the Senior Center at 7:00 P.M., we've added two additional public meetings, which will be on December 11th. Plus, the survey is now available online, so people can watch a video and then take the survey and give their input that way if going to a meeting is inconvenient. And so we really encourage everyone to tell their friends and family, there's lots of ways to give input.
Yeah. You've done a wonderful job coordinating all of that.
Say again, when and where? Tomorrow night, please?
It's at 7:00 P.M. at the Senior Center.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Stand adjourned.[1764.66]